Can you hear?
Test, test.
Test, test, test.
Okay. Good morning. We'll try it again. My name is Don Michaelman and I welcome you to the meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Uh, before we start, uh, what we're gonna do is have a little change in the agenda. We're gonna take item three and move it up to item two, cause I have a feeling we have a lot of people here with the... Well, try it a little better. Can you hear now? Alrighty. I'll start over. My name is Don Michaelman and welcome you to the Planning and Zoning Commission. We are gonna make a change in the order of the agenda and move the item three to the second one here. And allow those people to leave and then we'll go on to the item two at that time on that, so. We're gonna call the, uh, meeting to order for the September 30th, 2021 public hearing of the City of Prescott Planning Commission. Uh, we have six commissioners here. The vote will require four for a majority on that. This is an open public hearing and is being taped, recorded, and videotaped by the city. The proceedings are being televised by representatives of the public media. The public, local cable, and/or radio stations may also rebroadcast. As some members may be attending this meeting remotely, all parties wishing to be heard, including commission members, are required to state their name prior to speaking in order to ensure accurate minutes. Members of the public when called upon are required to state their name and address for the record, so that we may know who is speaking and be able to contact them a later date if necessary. Uh, would you please check your phones to make sure it's on mood or off? Would appreciate that. And we would now proceed with the meeting. First item is the minutes of the July 8th, 2021 meeting. Are there... Oh, excuse me. Forgot to have the commission members to introduce themselves. We'll start off on my right with Greg.
Thank you, uh, Greg Lizell.
Good morning, Stan Galagowski.
Good morning, Tom Hutchison.
Good morning, Ted Gambogi.
Morning, Butch Tracy.
And now we'll try to go through the minutes here. Are there any corrections to the minutes? If no corrections, is there a motion concerning the minutes?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve, uh, the minutes from April 29th, uh, 2021.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
All right, motion, second. Any further discussion? Uh, let's see, we probably need to do a roll call on this, so we'll do a roll call on the minutes. Kaylee.
Tracy? Butch Tracy?
Yes.
Greg Lizell?
Yes.
Tom Hutchison?
I'm not sure, present would be the right... Cause I wasn't here on the...
That's fine.
Present.
Stan Galagowski?
Yes.
Ted Gambogi?
Clarification, we're approving the minutes of what date?
July 8th.
I'd like to amend my motion July 8th. My apologies.
Yes, I approve.
Don Michaelman?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
The next item on the agenda, and before we get to this item, uh, this is dealing with a church, uh, rezoning. I am on the Board of Directors for Habitat for Humanity. Habitat has an office at this building, so I want to make this public knowledge on this. Whatever the commission recommends will not affect me personally or financially. And this is just to make sure we have clarity on the situation there. So the next item here will be REZ 21-006. Property owner, Arizona Christian Missionary Society. Applicant is Eric Moore. A request for General Plan Amendment GPA 21-003 and rezoning from SF9 Single Family to BG Business General for retail business on APN 115-05-042B at 923 Black Drive.
Thank you. Good morning, commission members of the... Oh, man, thought start already. Thank you Chairman, members of the commission, Tammy Dewitt, Community Planner of the City of Prescott. Uh, so we have two requests in front of you today. The first is a minor general plan amendment from low, medium-density residential, which is 1 to 7 dwelling units per acre to commercial. And the second request in front of you as part of the same application is a rezoning from residential, single-family SF9 to Business General BG. Here's the 2015 land use general plan map. Um, so this property was originally developed in the mid-sixties as a church. Churches are allowed in residential zoning districts. And it's continually been used as a church. So when we came back through in 2015 to update the land use map, they were looking at the general, the commute neighborhood plans for that area. And the neighborhood plan didn't have any changes for this parcel or this particular area to commercial. So when they did the land use map, they didn't take in consideration that the surrounding area is commercial and that this may one day be commercial, cause it was a church and we just assumed churches aren't gonna go away. Well, it is for sale and now we have a proposal in front of you. So the first part of this, uh, application is to, um, amend the general plan map from this low dense, medium-density residential to commercial, which is similar to the adjacent areas. The second request in front of you is a rezoning. This parcel is zoned, single-family, right now, which like I said, churches are allowed. But the, the proposed owner, that the person who's wanting to buy the property, wants to change it into a retail use. So which requires it to be rezoned. Um, Business General matches the surrounding commercial zoning that's around it. And so we felt it was appropriate zoning for this property. So the request in front of you is to rezone it also from SF9 to Business General. This is the subject property. It is developed. It has, um, adequate parking for any proposed uses of the church, of this building, sorry. And this kinda shows you the area. It is a developed area. Many of the uses around here are commercial. And then we have residential on the other side of Willow Creek Road. Here's some pictures of the property. And this is another view of it off Willow Creek Road. And then this is looking up from Black Drive up to it. So there is some elevation changes, so any residential in the area wouldn't be affected by it. And it's already been developed kind of commercially through the years and screened from any adjacent uses. So we have two recommended actions today if you choose to recommend approval. The first is a general plan amendment from low damp, medium-density residential to commercial and the rezoning from single-family 9 to Business General. And that concludes my presentation and I'm free to answer any questions and the applicants are here too.
Do any commissioners have questions of staff?
We do have one comment card.
Okay.
So Eric Moore.
Good morning. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. My name is Eric Moore. I live at 281 Whisper Ridge here in Prescott, 86301, just off of Rosser. I'm the owner of Jay's Bird Barn, Hallmark, and Arizona Field Optics. As a lifelong naturalist and as the owner of both Jay's Bird Barn and Hallmark, I'm very excited about the prospect of purchasing this lovely property. We've been in business for 18 years and we've paid commercial rent for 18 years. So as you can imagine, we've paid rent hundreds of thousands of dollars in rent. It's exciting to have the prospect of actually owning a building and having equity. While we plan to convert the use of this building from a house of worship to a retail store, I cannot think of a better location for our retail store than a former church of God. Anyone who has visited Jay's Bird Barn and anyone who knows me know that the whole purpose of our business is to help individuals create a connection to nature. Our business touches so many lives. We literally have thousands of customers who love our business. Through their bird feeding and bird watching activities at home, our customers find peace and a connection to the creator of nature and wild birds. This connection is very meaningful to me personally and to our customers. Additionally, the purpose, the mission of Hallmark is to create more caring in the world. When you combine the purpose of Jay's Bird Barn of creating a connection to nature and the mission of Hallmark to create more caring in the world, the future of the church location is in good hands. The work of bringing individuals together in a love of God and caring for one another will continue through our good work at Jay's Bird Barn and Hallmark. We look forward to making this a lovely place for people to gather together in their love of nature and caring for one another. Um, we want to retain elements of the building, uh, such as the stained glass and somehow would like to retain the cross. I'm not sure how or where. So those who enter our store will know that this was a former house of God and we will continue to carry on that mission in our own unique and special way. Also, I'd like to make a comment that once we close escrow, we plan to allow Habitat for Humanity to continue to stay in the building for 90 days to give them time to find a new location. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to, uh, answer those for you.
Any question for the applicant?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
You're currently in the Safeway Cow Ranch Shopping Center.
Yes, sir.
Uh, how would you compare your parking at the proposed facility to what you had where you are now?
The proposed facility is 1.91 acres. It has way, way more parking than we will ever need. Uh, it has parking for a church, which is probably a capacity of like 300 people. And if we have 30 people in our store at any given time, that would be shocking. So, uh, parking will not be an issue. Good question.
And, and do you expect to have any other tenants in the store?
No, sir. Uh, we have three existing businesses that, which will occupy, which are the current three businesses at our current location. Jay's Bird Barn, Hallmark, and Arizona Field Optics, which I own all three.
Thank you.
Yes.
Other questions? Stan?
I do have a comment. I, I just wanna commend you, uh, for just recognizing that this, this truly is a commercial area at this point. Uh, across the street, we have several dentists that have, uh, created some offices there. I grew up on the corner of Rosser and Willow Creek. It's a two-lane road. Now it's a four-lane road and it's, it's very commercialized. So when this was zoned residential, it made sense. Or when the church went in there, it made sense.
60 years ago.
Correct. Yeah. So, and I've watched, a good friend of mine lived in one of those homes that was, uh, uh, in the residential portion, so. And that's now turned commercial. So I just, I just think it's smart business. It's great for the community. I'm glad that it's a local business, uh, that's going in there. So truly appreciate you looking at that property. Thank you.
Other questions?
Yeah, Tom Hutchison. Um, Eric, is there room to expand your business in that building?
I would like to think so. Um, just as a side note, um, we custom blend our bird seed blends. Uh, all of our bird seed blends are made right here in Prescott and we partner with Yavapai Exceptional Industries, Y E I, which of course, most people knows is a nonprofit that employs adults with disabilities. Currently, all of our bird seed is mixed at their Ruger Airpark Industries facility at the airport in the industrial park. At some point, if possible, I would love to move our bird seed mixing operation to this location, but that remains to be seen. Uh, that could be years and years from now. Uh, my first, uh, effort is just to get in the building and get up and running and be profitable and see if we can expand. And if we did, it would probably just be immediately to the south of the building, so connect to the south, south end of the building, about where the arrow is, a little over, yeah, right down in there. So it wouldn't affect any of the parking or anything like that. It would just... That would be a long-term goal. I don't see that happening short-term. But I'd love to have our seed mixing operation on site. So, yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Does anyone from the audience wish to make a comment concerning this agenda item? If not, Tammy, can we vote on both at the same time or we need to take each one separately?
Separately.
Okay, so...
I'm not Tammy, by the way.
And we are very happy about that. All right, we will look at each item separately. Is there a motion to be made?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve, uh, the approval of a general plan amendment GPA 21-003 from low, medium-density residential to commercial.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'd like to second.
Alrighty, seconded by Stan. Motion, second. Any further discussion? If not, Kaylee, would you call for the vote?
Butch Tracy?
Uh, I would approve it.
Ted Gambogi?
Yes.
Thomas Hutchison?
Uh, yes.
Stan Galagowski?
Yes.
Greg Lizell?
Yes.
Don Michaelman?
Yes.
The motion passes 6-0.
Is there a motion concerning the second item?
Okay. Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, what am I, from single-family 9, SF-9 to Business General BG.
With the approval of that.
With the approval of that, yeah.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
All second. Stan Galagowski.
Motion and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, Kaylee, would you call for the vote?
Butch Tracy?
Yes.
Ted Gambogi?
Yes.
Thomas Hutchison?
Yes.
Stan Galagowski?
Yes.
Greg Lizell?
Yes.
Don Michaelman?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
Now we'll move on to the item of, uh, REZ 21-005. Property owner, Mary J. Swing, applicant Copper Tree Construction Group, LLC. A request for rezoning from SF35 Single Family to MF-M Multi-Family Medium Density to allow for the 36 detached, single-family type homes as rental properties on APN 105-03-004G, 1801 South Blooming Hill Drive. For those who've not had an opportunity to attend a P&amp;Z meeting before, the staff will make a presentation. Commission members will then ask questions of the staff. The applicant will then have the opportunity to make a presentation. Commission members will ask questions of the applicant. Then we will open it up for the public to make comments on this. And with the number of people we have here, I would ask that the comments be limited to three minutes. Kaylee will give a 30-second notification when you have 30 seconds left. If someone has already made what you want to state, restating that may not be of any additional benefit for the commission members, but it is up to you. So, any, if there's any questions on this when we get the public's part, let me know and we'll try to answer them for you. George?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a request for a rezoning for a piece of property located at the northwest corner of Rosser Street and Blooming Hills Drive. I've got it identified here with a red boundary of the property in question, so that's the boundary of the rezoning. Some of the nearby subdivisions, uh, Cloudstone subdivision is to the south and west. Cliff Rose is to the east. Uh, just north of this is Blooming Hills Estates. And then my labeling wouldn't work for Kensington Place, which is a small subdivision right here. It's a townhouse, uh, subdivision. And most of us know the location of the adult center. Zoning in the area is quite a mix. Um, NOB is Neighborhood Oriented Business. It's a commercial designation. It allows for full range of small commercial and office-type uses. Not heavier commercial, would not allow things like, uh, major retail stores or gasoline stations or anything like that, but it would certainly allow for coffee shops, dentist offices, that type of commercial. The SF18 zoning, SF stands for single-family and 18 are minimum lot sizes. The PAD designation that's attached to most of these means that it's a planned area development. Those usually have additional open spaces set aside, similar to what you see in the Cloudstone subdivision down here. And by setting aside those open spaces, they're allowed to make the lots smaller than the zoning classification. So the lots can be smaller than 18,000 square feet. Um, in this area, they're anywhere between 5,500 square feet and 11,000 square feet per lot within, um, the, the Cloudstone area. Uh, Cliff Rose, roughly the same size, uh, slightly larger. Uh, the area just north of there, the, the, uh, Blooming Hills Estate subdivision range from about 16,000 to about 19,000 square feet on most of the lots. Kensington Place is a bit of an anomaly because of its, uh, townhouse character. The lots are about 3,500 to 5,000 square feet each. The buildings are attached, so you have two attached units adjacent to one another, zero lot lines in between those units. This is Rosser Street. It is a through connector that goes from 89 to the east, all the way to Willow Creek Road to the west. Large lot subdivisions further west, uh, from that location. The general plan assumed the area would develop in a manner similar to what it's developed as. The mixed-use designation that includes this parcel and the adjacent parcel to the west of it was intended to allow for neighborhood commercial uses. It was supposed to more closely match up with that NOB zoning that we saw on the zoning map, uh, for the types of uses allowed. Uh, the proposed use of this property for a residential type of use is permitted under the mixed-use, so there's no change to the general plan necessary as part of this rezoning that will allow for the residential zoning that's being requested. The proposed lot layout is a little hard to describe compared to a lot of things that you see bef- before you. It's not a subdivision in that it's a single parcel and will remain a single parcel. Each of these are individual houses, but they're all on commonly-owned property and this proposal is for each of those houses to be a rental product. They will look like a single-family house, but they are rental-only and not an ownership scheme. Each one includes a two-car garage plus driveway space for additional parking, just like a single-family home would require. That actually accounts for the total amount of parking that would be required if we counted it like an apartment complex. So they meet the parking requirements based on that. The site layout involves a series of streets, driveways, they're technically driveways and not roads, that allow for access to each of the units. Primary access would be Blooming Hills Drive. This would allow full turning movements right or left out of the location. And a secondary access on the Rosser Street that would allow a westbound right-in and an westbound right-out only, not full-turning movements. There is a raised median there that would remain. The proposal is for the units to be a rental product and because of the number of units and the rental status of the units, it is a multifamily development, even though the buildings will look like individual, single-family homes. So that's why the rezoning to multifamily medium is necessary. Single-family zoning means one house, one family, one lot. Anything more than that requires a multifamily zoning or a commercial zoning to allow it. In this case, the applicant requested the multifamily medium zoning rather than a commercial designation, which would also have allowed multifamily uses. We had a lot of contact from surrounding neighbors, um, surrounding neighborhoods. As of last night, when I finished this, we had 49 emails. I've received another one, which I gave to you this morning. So 50 emails specifically about the project. Um, sorry, 50 emails and letters. We received several written, handwritten letters or, uh, printed letters. And then a petition that had 195 signatures. Some additional signatures came in this morning, so we gave you some additional pages for that. I'm not sure what that count is. I didn't go through it. Um, it arrived fairly late. Most of the concerns seem to be about these four topics, the top four topics. Loss of property value because of the change in zoning. Surrounding properties all have larger lots, single-family zoning, and there was a concern expressed by many of the folks who, who wrote to us that changing the zoning to multifamily would affect their property values. Concerns about increased traffic on both Rosser and Blooming Hills Drive. Um, because this development has access to both, traffic impacts on both would occur. Uh, 36 units, uh, at two-bedroom and two, two-car garage from a traffic engineering standard is probably fairly low-impact, but it does add to already-existing traffic on the roadway. There were concerns about compatibility of a multifamily product next door to a single-family product. All of the neighboring properties, um, that are developed currently are single-family, um, as far as the design goes. Including Kensington Place, the townhouse product is a single-family product. Just means the buildings are attached together and the lots are very small, but you own your property and you own your building. Uh, there were concerns expressed about water resources and concerns expressed about water and sewer infrastructure in the area. Um, in regard to the water sewer infrastructure, any application for building permitting to us goes through an extensive review to make sure that we have infrastructure in place that will serve it without degrading any adjacent properties. And if it would degrade it, we require off-site improvements to, um, that infrastructure as part of an approval process. So just to allay some concerns, water and sewer lines in the area would have to be sufficiently sized to accommodate this or the city will not issue building permits for the development. Similarly, we require off-site improvements fairly commonly. As you may notice, if any of you have driven the area or any of you live in the area, um, sidewalks are missing along here. Sidewalks are a common off-site improvement requirement as part of a project approval. Uh, the City of Prescott will require a sidewalk on both frontages, um, Blooming Hills Drive and Rosser Street as part of a, a approval of building permitting later. We had a couple of concerns about who will live there. Um, as far as the city knows and as far as the applicants told us, we're not going to house refugees from anywhere at this location. Project summary is pretty straightforward. It's a request for rezoning from a single-family zoning district. SF35, which will allow approximately five houses on that same-size parcel to multifamily medium to allow 36 rental houses, again, not under individual ownership. It's not a subdivision plat. It's a single-developer-owned, managed apartment complex with the apartment units spread out over the whole site instead of stacked-in building. And the development is subject to every other city code requirement before building permitting can be accomplished. So there's a, a long road ahead if the rezoning were to occur for the applicant to meet all of our requirements to construct the buildings. That's a synopsis of it. At this point, um, we do have the applicants here. Um, if you would like to ask me questions about the, the presentation so far, that's great. And then the applicant would be available to talk to you and answer more questions.
Thank you, George. Why don't we take questions of staff first and then, uh, allow the applicant to make a presentation on that? Any questions for George?
Yeah, Don, I'd like to ask George a question.
Yes, Tom.
George, it, what occurs to me is that if it's multifamily medium, that opens the door to a whole laundry list of opportunities. Does this request tie specifically to 36 units? Or, or could that change and become whatever?
So the potential actions involve a recommendation by this body. I think that's important to, to point out as well. You're a recommending body. You're gonna say, "We recommend yes" or "We recommend no" or "We recommend yes with conditions." And then this will move on to the city council for an actual decision. The staff has put in your potential actions, your recommended motions, two options. If you were to recommend approval, we specifically ask that you recommend approval with substantial conformance to the site plan that they submitted to you and that we've shown you today. That way, they can't come back and double the number of units. The density wouldn't allow double, but it would allow more. And they can't change the, the layout of the site. If you make a recommendation in favor, then that's what we expect they will build. And that's what we would issue permits for and nothing else. So you can condition it on compliance with that site plan.
Thank you. Other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, George, if you look to the top of the page there, you got, uh, the Blooming Hills Estate Phase 4.
Yes.
That has not occurred yet, correct?
Um, it is an existing subdivision, yes, so...
Is there houses there right now?
Yes, so that's this. Yes, so that's this. Most of those lots are 16,000 to 19,000 square feet, and all along this north boundary, except the front closest to the roadway are occupied.
I think they're building there right now. Okay, I just was wondering if those were empty or they're...
They're not. They're occupied lots.
And then to the left, or that would be to the west, I think, is that where the future Greek Orthodox Church is supposed to go?
They own the property, and they have advised us that they intend to build a church there at some point in the future.
Then across the street, if I remember right, it was either, yeah, there or on the other side of Cloudstone. The Church of Latter-day Saints came to us when I was on board of adjustments for a steeplehype. Is that the lot there?
That's this lot. So that is a possibility again in the future. That's been some time ago, if you recall.
Like a trap.
Interestingly, there's no church there, and the "for sale" sign has been up since we talked to them. So I don't know what their timing is on it or if a church would be built there ever.
Okay, thank you.
George.
Yeah, George Butch Tracy. Is there a square-footage requirement on the houses surrounding that as far as the house itself? Is there anything that's on it?
You mean in the neighborhoods adjoining?
Yes, sir. I know there's different zonings, but is there a...
Not a city requirement. They may have CCNRs that require minimum floor sizes, but the city of Prescott doesn't have anything like that.
Thank you. Other questions for George? If not, would the applicant want to make a presentation?
Thank you, Commission, for giving me an opportunity to speak and hearing this today. Appreciate there's a lot of interest in this project.
Could you state your name?
Name and address, please.
Oh, I'm very sorry. Robert Cole Johnson. And you want my home address?
Business address is fine, too.
Business address is 1620 Willow Creek Road.
Thank you, sir.
Been a resident of Prescott, Arizona since approximately 1982. So I've lived here a long time. I was able to read at least all of the correspondence that had been provided by mid-morning yesterday. I appreciate some stuff came in yesterday afternoon and this morning that I haven't had a chance to read. Had an opportunity based on that to reach out to different neighbors that had raised concerns, was able to visit with some of them directly, hands-on, yesterday, meet with them, hear their concerns directly, obviously had read their concerns, talked through them. For the benefit of the larger group, I'd like to touch on a few of those, if I may. There were several concerns about a two-story product being built here. I wanted to disabuse that. We don't have any intention of building a two-story product here. We're willing to stipulate that this is a single-level product. Similarly, just to staff's recommendation, as far as an approval recommendation, we're happy to stipulate to the substantial conformance of the site plan, so we're not asking for a zoning change with an intention of anything but this site plan. So this is the site plan that we intend to move forward with. We think this plan's smart. We think it's responsible. We also think and believe that it really does meet a standard as far as being the proper transitional zoning between single-family residential and the different business uses that are surrounding it. There was concern that this was somewhat unprecedented as far as our lot size and what we're asking. I want to share very generally that our lot size is very similar to Cloudstone. It's across the street. Our lots are slightly larger than Kensington, the cottages, and the Village of Prescott Lakes, all three adjacent parcels. So we actually have a very similar profile as far as that. We also have, and I think this is at least worth discussing, there are some beautiful homes, Blooming Hills Estate, Phase IV, some of the nicest homes in Prescott, Arizona. And they have concern about our density, they have multiple concerns. But one of those is density. And very simply, their lot coverage is about 18%, and our lot coverage is about 18%. Appreciate we have more houses on there than they'd like to see. I appreciate they're smaller houses than they'd like to see. But as far as maintaining our open space, being good stewards of what's here, our lot coverages, they both hit right in the 18% range. It's not scientific. That's not done by the engineers. That's done with me, but I feel competent providing that. So I think it's worthwhile for us to consider. We've also heard appreciatively, you know, some concerns about the energy usage and the water usage, and we all respect and appreciate how important that is. What we know, both from our site and from our homes, that our energy usage and our water usage, they're significantly more efficient than anything that's been built adjacent to us, and that's from commitments we make in construction. That's also commitment to a smaller house, a smaller footprint, a smaller impact. And while I appreciate this does have, or at least the perception of a negative impact on our adjacent neighbors, I think we do have some responsibility to our seniors, to our other moderate-income households, to ensure some kind of a balance of options for a larger population. And we do appreciate that those people are being precluded from Prescott, Arizona. We don't think that's good for Prescott, Arizona. And again, it's certainly not a lifelong resident, but I've been here for a lot of years. We do have to have places that are affordable for our teachers, for our seniors, and for other people on a moderate income. And we're providing that, and we think we're doing that responsibly, and we think it's the proper, prudent transition zoning. The impact of traffic was a big item that's brought up. The impact to traffic, traffic studies, the traffic impact is so low with the number of units that we're providing here that a traffic study we don't believe is required. Certainly, if staff later asks us to do one, we will. It's been a condition before that we've dealt with. We don't believe one will be asked for because the impact is so low. We don't believe it even triggers a traffic study. It's that nominal. I think it's important, and I might even ask Mr. Worley to address this for the benefit of the group, because there's been some concern about this. But what we're asking for, we believe is a permitted use under the general plan and under the existing zoning. So that raised concern and some stresses between people that are going to speak here, I'm sure immediately behind me. But I think it's important for everybody, for us to get that out there and get that out properly, and that what we're asking for is a permitted use. We're not deviating from the permitted uses on this property. There were concerns about the quality or the caliber of the potential tenants here. I would tell you that all of our projects, they're professionally managed. They're managed by a company called PB Bell. We believe that they're the premier management company in the state of Arizona. They've been doing this for about 50 years. We do exhaustive background checks, credit checks, income verifications. We have very low turnover. You know, our goal is to have a six- or a seven-year tenant. So it is, while we do need a multifamily zoning for this, we believe that's the proper way to get here. It's, this isn't a traditional multifamily-type zoning or multifamily-type product. It's a single-family-type product that affords and provides for the city and for myself an ability to offer some affordability into the housing, but still allow families or seniors to have a single-family detached product that's desired. With the request of this approval, we don't know of any other variances that'll be required. It doesn't mean that some won't come up potentially, whether that's driven from the city or from ourselves, but from the work that we've done so far with Lions Engineering, with the city, our own work, our own, we don't believe that there are any other variances that'll be required for this. With that, I think that would cover what I wanted to discuss and the points that I touched with the opposition as well, and wanted to clarify that. Any questions from the commission members or from the chair that I could address?
Members, anybody have questions?
I have a few.
Ted.
You've made an attempt to do an orientation. The concept that you're presenting is new to me, and it just may be new to other people. Could you explain the idea behind single-family rental homes?
The concept between, we appreciate it's a pretty significant contingent of single-family already. There's a significant percentage of our population that are already renting a single-family homes. They're just not being professionally managed, and they're not purpose-built that way. This is what's called a BFR product, which is build-for-rent. It's intentionally purpose-built that way. Professional management is put in place up front, again, for all of the items that I just talked about, but also to make sure that the asset itself is preserved. We're world-class neighbors on this. We have a product that we built many years ago called Stonehaven, right off of Gurley and Gale Gardner. It's a townhome. It's an attached product where this is detached, but a lot of people in the community are familiar with that. It's a signature location in Prescott, Arizona. It's something that we're proud to be associated with a long time. It's pristine. It's so, to the extent that people have concerns about how this concept works or the quality of the tenant, the quality of, it's something that we're proud of. It's something that we've done before. Those units, just for clarity, are attached, and those units were sold. But very similarly, they are professionally managed. They do have an association in place that allows us to provide for the maintenance, the landscaping, the upkeep that we would all want. This also allows us, obviously, by doing it purpose-built, to maintain an efficiency, to afford a price point to a tenant that's lower than otherwise could be achieved or would be achieved by scattered housing that's independently built and losing those efficiencies of doing the site at one time or the construction all at one time. So it just simply inherent in the process and purpose-building this does allow us to have a lower basis in it and provide a lower rent for our tenants. Now, their market rent, I apologize, I failed to mention this before, but one of the concerns that was brought up in several of the letters was would this be, have a Section 8 component? There isn't any Section 8 component to this. This isn't any HUD type of a product. With that said, naturally, because of what it is and because of the size, it does provide for an affordability index that's desired and needed in this city, but it's not sanctioned.
I have a series of questions, and I'll adjust them based on the flow of your answers.
Sure.
One thing you recently talked about was rent. Give us some idea of what kind of rent for a single-family home in this development.
Well, there'll be market rent, so market will control that. We have similar products to this that we've built throughout Phoenix, Arizona, about a dozen of them, and they typically rent around 1,700 a month. I would expect it to be a little higher than that in Prescott, Arizona, but I don't know that. That's something that the market will have to bear.
And that brings me to one of my other questions. Although this would be kind of a first in Prescott, I understand there's a lot of these developments in the Phoenix area. Could you give us some idea of approximately how many are down in the Phoenix area?
I can tell you just very generally that this is the most popular asset class being built in the nation. There are several new real estate investment trusts that are built specifically for this. Several of the public home builders have opened up divisions to build this. One of the premier ones is LGI. There's also American Homes for Rent that are both doing these types of subdivisions. Metro Living, which is the company I'm associated with in Phoenix, Arizona, is building these. But there are many tens of thousands of these units being built in every municipality, and part of that's to address an affordability concern that's not limited to Prescott, Arizona. There are multiple municipalities that are recognizing that they have outpriced any ability, given the inflation that's happened more recently and just the overall appreciation, they've outpaced any ability to provide housing for any of our lower-to-moderate-income individuals. And so this asset class is being distributed, while it's first to Prescott, it's certainly not unique. It's not new. This has been happening. It's pretty prevalent the last couple of years. There are major markets throughout the country that there are more, that in the next 12 months there will actually be more homes built, purpose-built for rent than built for sale.
Thank you. We can see from the participation from the residents in the room that this has the potential of being a controversial topic. 50 emails and seven additional signatures, so I think we're up to 202 on the petition. If this came in for rezoning to build an apartment complex like the early Soviet design on Miller Valley, I would wholeheartedly concur with the residents, but I'd like to know more about this effort as we go through today. Do you have any drawings of what these individual homes would look like?
I don't believe we have any conceptual drawings done. Is that correct, Mr. Worthy? Is there any architectural completed at this point?
So for the record, no elevation drawings are available right now, but there is a basic floor plan based on the Stonehaven subdivision that exists already in Prescott.
And that was required for us to get the proper sighting on the site map and make sure that the units that we were planning on building actually fit properly and to make sure that we properly address the setbacks and the spacing, et cetera.
I have no more questions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Tom?
Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Absolutely. Thanks for having me.
I'd like to clarify a couple of things.
Please.
First up is affordable housing. I think we'll all agree that this city needs affordable housing.
I hope so.
Do you believe this to be affordable housing?
I believe that it will certainly be the first foray into it and the only significant advancement that I'm aware of towards addressing that. It's certainly still expensive. I'm surprised by how much overall costs are and overall rents are, but this will be more affordable than anything else that we're aware of. And again, the only real productive step that I know, this has been a discussion topics for multiple administrations. We've had the city staff, city council, the mayors for multiple administrations have addressed this. This is the first product that I'm aware of that actually makes a significant step towards addressing that.
Just for clarification again, affordable housing, general consensus is that's below median income. The median income in 2019 for Prescott was about $48,000 a year. That's $4,000 a month. That's $1,000 a week. That's affordable housing, if it's below $1,000 bucks a month. So this isn't, doesn't satisfy Section 8 or any other criteria for really being affordable housing.
And Mr. Worthy, I did clarify to begin with that this would be market rent, and it would not be Section 8 housing. What it will be nevertheless is the most affordable market-rate product that I'm aware of.
But it doesn't satisfy the true definition of affordable housing.
The definition that I believe you're citing is a HUD definition, Housing and Urban Development, that's not necessarily the same definition that's accepted by any other municipality in the city or in the country. That's HUD's definition, and their definitions is specific in the event that you want HUD to guarantee a load and program for you.
I just wanted to dimension what real affordable housing looks like to a builder. Secondly, tell me more about BFR, build-for-rent. What practices would you put in place that would allow you to save money and get the rent down to some reasonable place that you're talking about?
So one of the big items that we do is we address efficiency within the construction. Appreciate, from a green standard, the most important critical element that you can address with a green standard is, there's a lot of time spent on products, and the first and most important component that you address in any green standard is the overall impact. The most efficient product that you use is the one that you don't use. Might sound silly, but several of us have really nice homes in this town that are very significant, large, very big impact. Simply shrinking the footprint of that house helps to address the affordability piece, helps to address the efficiency piece. Within the efficiency, though, there's all kinds of things that we do. From a water usage standpoint, it's all low-flow. It's also, though, critically, and people, it's pretty easy to address and do a touch point on low-flow fixtures. It's much more difficult, but it's the stuff that we take to address the site plan itself and how it utilizes native plants and native plantings instead of transplants that are high-water usage. We also use a technology, it's called the RUBS system, that's an acronym, R-U-B-S, which is supported through the Arizona Landlord Tenant Act. It's a best practice. And what that does is provides through technology, there's an ongoing issue within the city right now on do we do a master meter for products, projects like this, or do we do sub-meters? sub-meters? And at the risk of sounding dismissive, I think that's too shallow of a view on this than should happen. It should be a little wider lens. Critically important that we address the efficiency and the water utilization, but there are great technology platforms to do that now. We don't need to go put 36 additional water meters on a site like this to accomplish what we want. We need to design it smart. We need to minimize the impact. And then we need to utilize technology from an efficiency standpoint, from the energy and from the water usage. Those are all things that you can do on a BFR when it's purpose-built, and you know that that's what you're going to do, and it's a long-term hold. And then that's in the best interest of the asset, of the owner, of the equity group, and the tenants, because they have very small impact. We have projects that their utility bills are running under $60 a month because of the efficiencies that we build in. So rent's always the part that's talked about, but it's broader than that. If people have a rent that's low because they have a cheaper unit or older-dated unit, but their utilities are so high, here, they get both pieces.
Any other questions, Tom?
Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir.
Yeah, I may be in here and I missed it, but what is the square footage of these places?
It'll be approximately 1,050. And when I say that, I believe the actual calculation is 1,044 at the moment, but the plans aren't done. But it'll be approximately 1,050 or just under.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Other commission members? Greg?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is more for George.
Sir?
Let's assume that this project was to go forward and to get built. At any time down the future, could those be split and sold individually?
Yes. It would require a subdivision plan. It could be done in a number of different ways. Given the layout and the proximity of the buildings to one another, a condominium approach, where you own the building or the airspace in the building, while all of the outside and the open space remains in common ownership, would be something that could be retroactively done to this. It's remotely possible.
I know they've done it in Phoenix with apartments.
Yes.
That became condos later.
We've had that situation here as well, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from commission members? I have a couple.
Yes, sir.
On that. Is there going to be an onsite manager, or will the property manager be off-site?
I would, I don't have a perfect answer for you. I would assume that there would be an onsite management for the first year, and after that, it would not be required.
Okay.
That's an assumption, just because we've done these before, done about a dozen of these, and that's typically what's happened. Our turnover, because of what we have, is so unique and so desired, there's very, very little turnover. People want these units and want to stay there. So there really gets to a point where they don't need onsite management. But we'd like to have it that first year to make sure best practices are established, everyone understands the expectations, but also to have someone onsite during lease-up.
All right. Who will be in charge of caring for all the property, not only the common area, but the actual houses itself? Will that be the tenant that has to maintain it, or will the owner maintain that?
The owner maintains both, both the vertical infrastructure, as well as the horizontal infrastructure. So all components of it are maintained through our property management company. You ask about onsite manager, there's onsite manager, but there's also, we also utilize an onsite landscaper, so that it's maintained on a daily basis. And that's why these projects are so pristine, and they are signature in, from that respect.
Okay. With my rough calculation, it looks like a tenant or family in there would have to have a minimum income between $68,000 and $70,000 to be able to afford this, if you look at the percentage of what is available out of their monthly income for housing and so forth.
And sir, is that using a 25%?
30%.
30%. I will tell you that the new standard is 40%, and we want to do everything that we can to compress that. But the new standard is 40%, and that's, and most people, especially from an affordability standpoint, are not able to live in Prescott, Arizona, even at 40%. So we are compressing that and trying to be sensitive to it.
With my involvement with Habitat, I understand that part there, too.
Yes, sir.
So we're actually then looking at someone in the low 70s, a family in the low 70s income, to be able to afford this. Does that sound about right with the 40%?
I don't know, sir. I haven't done that math.
I just did a rough calculation.
I apologize. I haven't done that.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you, sir. I appreciate that.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
We are going to open this up for the public.
Mr. Chairman, may I just make a couple of quick points in regard to the necessity? The general plan would support the use without a change, but the zoning would allow, under the current zoning, only five residential units. So the rezoning is necessary. It's not permitted as is. So you have to rezone it to get the number of units that you're asking for.
I just meant from a usage standpoint. That's why I did want you to clarify for the group for me, George.
It can be a single-family product on that site, but at 4.6 acres, that's five lots.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
We're going to open it up for the public to make comments on this. As a reminder, I would like to, which, could you keep it to a three-minute thing? Kaylee will give a 30-second warning on this. If the comments continue on, what we may do is take a break during the middle of your comments. So in case pressure starts building up, then we can take care of the acts, things like that. So who, do we have people who want to make a comment?
We actually have comment cards.
Yes. So the way I'm going to handle it is I have quite a few comment cards. I have four individuals who would like me to read their comments. So I'll do those first, and then I'll open it up. I'll call each individual up. I want you all to know, again, at 30 seconds, I'll simply be interjecting and saying 30 seconds. I will have this up here, too. The green light means you're still good. Yellow is 30 seconds to go, and red is time is up. So I will go ahead and start with a comment from Donna.
Excuse me, Kaylee. Can everyone see that light where you got it placed?
Yes, they will, when I open up the floor for comment. So the first comment is from Donna Gallagher at 400 Isabel Lane. And this is her comment. "This planned development is certainly not in keeping with surrounding area and will add way more traffic to an already crazy, busy, trafficked area. Why is Prescott planning and zoning trying to change the character of our community and city?" Second comment from Boyd Gallagher at 400 Isabel Lane. "This is not a good mix for this neighborhood. Low-income housing in higher-end homes would put downward pressure on existing values to start with. Water, traffic, to name a couple other issues. I'm Third comment, Joe Van Pelt, no address given. "We love Prescott in our neighborhood. My wife and I have worked very hard to be able to live here. This housing project is admirable, but not at this location. House values will plummet, and we will have too much traffic." Lastly, Mary Van Pelt, 395 Isabel Lane. "We've worked hard our whole life to live in this wonderful neighborhood, and now there's a chance it will be taken away. How would you feel? Keep our neighborhood the way it's been." Okay. So I'm going to open up the floor. The first speaker, I apologize if I can't read this, Donald Hunter?
Hawker.
Hawker.
Sir, when you come up, would you please, again, repeat your name and address? Thank you.
Sure. Donald Hawker. I'm in Cliff Rose, 1475 Marvin Gardens Lane. And a big concern I have, like others, is the traffic impact. And now that I look at this map with the entry and exit actually from Rossar, I'm even more concerned about increase in traffic and the impact there. Additionally, this is not an appropriate development for the general neighborhood around there. It's all pretty much single-family, and this will have a huge impact. And I just can't imagine, if you do 36 units at 72 cars, you know, traffic is a big issue. So briefly, that's the way that I feel. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay, Chris Zaleski.
Thank you. My name is Chris Zaleski. I live at 129 Rotunda Way in Estancia de Prescott. And this situation here leads to some confusion on my part. If this were to be sold as single-family, and all the utilities are grouped together, how do you split that up? Also, the neighborhood area that we live in, in the general area around there, I don't believe this fits the way everything is laid out, single-family homes and whatnot. I'd like this developer to take a look at other areas where it would work better for multi-housing and/or lower income. I don't want to diminish what Prescott is, but perhaps they should take a look at Prescott Valley. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Ken Osved.
I'm Ken Osved at 106 Soaring in Eagle Ridge. I do not begrudge a developer wanting to invest and turn a profit. But do the math on this. The current zoning allows for, what, four per acre? So compared 16 units to 36 units, I think it's audacious of anyone to consider this proposed zoning change, because, well, the previous speakers have made the point about altering the character of the neighborhood. Secondly, on a more Mohler scale, this, the runaway development that's going on in Prescott and Prescott Valley is ridiculous. The infrastructure of the city will not handle the traffic. The streets will not handle the traffic. And where is the water going to come from? Prior to this monsoon, practically every day in the local paper, the Courier and the Phoenix paper, was an article about water shortage. This article from this morning's Courier discusses water, but I quote from this, "Prescott and Prescott Valley have continued to let developers set the pace for growth. The growth has run away, and I would hope that the newly-elected city officials and the current city officials will bear that in mind for the future."
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay, Stephen Harness.
Hello. I'm Lieutenant Colonel Stephen Harness, U.S. Army, retired. I'm a severely disabled veteran with spinal injuries. I was not hurt in combat. I live at 383 Bloomingdale Drive, about 900 feet from the proposed rezoning. My first question would be, what happens on this property if this zoning goes through, but the developer decides to sell it? Does this become a multi-open area for rezoning? Next, this zoning proposal has impact on all users of Rossar and Blooming Hills Drive, not just people within 1,500 feet of the development. Traffic in this area is currently unacceptable. Both roads are single-lane residential streets. They are not high-capacity thoroughfares like Prescott Lakes Parkway. They are sleepy at times, narrow, limited-use residential streets. On Rossar alone, this Thursday at 3:30 p.m. at the corner of Boardwalk and Rossar, about 400 yards down the road from this project, there were 13 cars stacked up at the stop sign. This proposed rezoning calls for an additional 72 cars. Personal experience tells me that during commute time, streets will shut down to a crawl and even impact Highway 89 in Willow Creek in the evening. Some people will look for alternatives. Alternatives mean they will rapidly drive down other streets. As I said before, I'm severely disabled. I'm 66, and my neighbors are older than I am. Commute hours are when us older folks are out walking and bicycling. Cars rapidly driving down other streets is exceptionally dangerous in our area. If this zoning is approved, roads and traffic patterns must be adjusted. Who pays to fix this self-inflicted wound? The city of Prescott. Onto the issue of water. Water usage for this project, is this within the city allocation of water per unit? This is a huge increase. I also object to this rental property plan. The homes, as suggested, would probably have a value of 40 to 65K per house. They're going to butt against a house on Zachary Lane that's $1 million. That is a travesty, and I vehemently disagree that is a compatible housing. Lastly, my neighbors and I live here. We pay taxes here. We built the community here. How does this proposed zoning benefit us? We get a say in the planning for this, and we say no. No to disruption of our neighborhood, no to increased costs to the city of Prescott, no to rezoning 21005. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning. My name is Ken Fiddick. My residence is 14 East Soaring Avenue here in Prescott. The community is called Estancia de Prescott. I see a few of my local neighbors are here as well. I am president of our homeowners' association. We have five board members. We have 80 property owners in Estancia. Soaring Avenue is only just one block south of Rossar, on the other side of Cloudstone, so close enough to this community, or, excuse me, to this project. We are strongly opposed to this whole effort, this project, this rezoning. I won't repeat the five or six bullet points that George brought up. Obviously, you're going to hear that multiple times today, so I'll spare the time for that. We don't want to turn this into Prescott, excuse me, into Phoenix. A slippery slope. If you change the zoning here, what's to say that other surrounding communities on Rossar couldn't be rezoned as well? 36 units is way too much. If the developer wants to build this cottage complex, then why doesn't he pick a zone that's already qualified for that project in Prescott or Prescott Valley? So I say move the project somewhere else. If it's a worthy project, and the city thinks it's a worthy project, and the commission thinks it's a worthy project, then move it to a zoning area that we already have in this community, the community of Prescott and Prescott Valley. Also, we didn't know further description, obviously, at this point, what the complex would look like other than this plot plan, the elevation, the rendering drawings, renderings of that. We don't want the Soviet-style community that the commissioner brought up earlier that's on Miller Valley, right? Okay. So someone mentioned about a church? Yes, there's going to be a church, an Orthodox church, right adjacent to this property. That's fine. That's already zoned for that. So many of us had a recent election, and we voted. We voted for Phil Good for mayor. We voted for Eric Moore, and we voted for Brandon. Why? Because we wanted to see the city change in the proper direction.
30 seconds.
Thank you. We wanted to see the city change in the proper direction. So I don't think the commission should be recommending this rezoning to a new council that has been just elected to stop these kind of projects from continuing forward. And would everyone in the audience who supports opposition to this rezoning, please stand up? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Before we continue, I know everybody is enthusiastic about expressing their thoughts here, but if we could hold the applause to allow everybody to have the opportunity to personally express their thoughts, I would appreciate it. Next one?
Pat Bleal.
Thank you very much. My name is Pat Bleal. I live at 389 Bloomingdale Drive with my husband, Gordon. We are right on the corner of Bloomingdale. We are right on the corner of Bloomingdale and Blooming Hills. Blooming Hills Drive parallels my backyard. One of the reasons that we moved to Prescott, and as many people here did, was because of this wonderful community. One of the things I love about this community, people have talked about the traffic. Let me characterize it for you. My husband is older and disabled as well. If we sit out in our backyard currently, night and day, we hear noisy trucks, noisy cars with these very loud muffler things going by, we cannot enjoy our backyard that we purchased this house specifically for. At night, sitting in our living room, we hear these cars with their mufflers zooming by on Blooming Hills Drive. Imagine how this noise is going to increase with the addition of seventy-two more cars. Now, I said my husband is elderly and somewhat disabled. He's recently taken up bike riding. He's got this, like, very cool little lawn chair with three wheels. It's great. He's able to now get out and enjoy the beauty of Prescott. But he can't cross Blooming Hills Drive because of the traffic. It's very dangerous for him. Imagine the addition of seventy-two more cars. One of the things I love about this neighborhood is particularly in the morning and the evening, people walking, walking their dogs, meeting their neighbors. I've tried to walk up that street. It's a little bit scary when you're on the sidewalk and the cars come zooming by. Imagine the addition of seventy-two more cars. What is that going to do to our ability to enjoy the neighborhood that we bought into? I say no to this rezoning. The gentleman already addressed the current election, so I will keep that comment. But I want to address the low density, the low income. The gentleman mentioned seniors. At the price of rental for these units with a senior, let's say it's a couple, living on social security, they can't afford this. A single senior-
Thirty seconds.
-living on social security can't afford this. And are there going to be young families living here? There are no children in this area. There are no playgrounds. There is no place for those children to play. I say no to this. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Blake DeWitt.
Good morning, commission. My name is Blake DeWitt. I live at three-eight-six Zachary Drive, which is the road that's just adjacent to this development. And I've lived in and out of Prescott for forty years, and I've admired the planning that goes into the developments along Rossar, the developments that George pointed out. And this development is not good planning. I think it would affect hundreds of homeowners in the area. And with Rossar being a primary artery, we're talking about an impact to not only traffic, but also safety. It's right across the street from the senior center, and I think, you know, it's just a bad location. Affordable housing is important in Prescott, but not at the expense of property owners in the neighborhoods nearby. And this impacts those neighborhoods nearby. So I request that the rezoning be turned down because of all those factors. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Barb DeWitt.
Excuse me, I'm a short person. Excuse me. Good morning. I just want to thank you for taking time to listen to us today. My name is Barb DeWitt, and I live at three-eight-six Zachary Drive, which, as my husband said, is the street just behind the proposed parcel rezoning. Unlike many of the other speakers in this room today, I am a Prescottonian. I was born and raised in Prescott. So I've seen Prescott grow from nine thousand people to what it is today. There was no Prescott Valley, and Chino Valley was way far away, or so we thought. So I have been wrapped my arms around growth in Prescott. And I like what Prescott is, and I'm glad that it's something that all of these other people want to come and enjoy. But I do fear that we run into huge changes in our area. The first change would be a continuity to the existing semi-custom and custom homes. The parcel in question is one of the last pieces of property in Blooming Hills proper. And we've held on to a standard in Blooming Hills with custom and semi-custom homes. And so to put a multifamily zoning in this last parcel of land is like a slap in the face to the homeowners in Blooming Hills. The, it's not a minor change. To me, it's a drastic change. With the potential of thirty-six homes in an area zoned for five, it really changes everything. We're talking, like everybody has said, seventy-two people. The zone change is not consistent with the orderly development of public services. When this development, or any other development in Prescott, is planned or zoned, it's planned for water use, trash pickup, street maintenance, traffic requirements. They're a major part of that plan, and that all has to change when something like this comes in. If you allow it here, you'll allow it somewhere else. And this parcel was part of a master plan, and it doesn't bode well with the infrastructure, I don't believe. Yesterday, the developer came and knocked on my door, and he wanted to answer any questions I had. During the course of our conversation, he implied that the city and he thought it was a good transition for the parcel, as if it was already a done deal. He also stood at my front door, and he told me my property value would suffer.
Thirty seconds.
And he stated people want development, but they just don't want it in their own backyard. Well, my thought is, why put it in anybody's backyard? Why not go where it's already zoned for that type of a development to go? We have an out-of-state landowner, from what I understand, and she's probably not aware of the impact that she's going to have on Prescott, not just Blooming Hills proper, but all over Prescott.
Time is up.
So again, I want to thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Jim Wright.
Good morning. My name is Jim Wright. I live at three-seventy-two Zachary Drive in Blooming Hills Estates. We're a gated community directly north and adjacent to this proposed rezoning. I'm also the president of our homeowners association. While we prepared for this opportunity this morning, we reached out to every homeowners association and development within the Blooming Hills area. This includes Phase One, Two, Three, and Four of Blooming Hills, Cliff Rose, Eagle Ridge, Cloudstone, and Prescott Lakes. And I must tell you, the support we've received is overwhelmingly positive. For the record, we strongly urge you folks, as the Planning and Zoning Commission, to reject this proposal. A little background, I'm being a little redundant from what I've heard from the other speakers. But Blooming Hills Estates and the neighboring developments are excellent examples of upscale neighborhoods with strict guidelines and CCRs. The building or the homes in our neighborhood are a minimum twenty-eight hundred square feet to a maximum of about four thousand. The property values are somewhere between nine hundred and probably over a million dollars in today's market. So why do people come to Prescott? I would suggest that most of the people in this room came here because it's a well-planned, controlled-growth city. Prescott is recognized as one of the best places to retire in America, one of the reasons I'm here. And we see the signs around town, everybody's hometown. That's not an act, that reputation that our city has is not an accident. It's well-planning on your guys' part. It's a group of people moving to Prescott to live a dream life, the life we want to lead. Every one of the homeowners in the Blooming Hills area have made a financial investment sizable in Prescott. We are indeed invested stakeholders in the Prescott reputation. Like everyone else, when I ask, so why should this be rejected? It breaks the mold of what good planning has been for a long time in Prescott. It breaks the mold and places rental units smack dab in the middle of well-planned, established, drafted-planned neighborhoods. In the essence of time, I'll wrap this up. If this proposal is approved, I'll leave you with a question and then I'll come with a statement. If this proposal is approved, what is the benefit for Prescott City? Because there's no benefit for the homeowner. One last thought. When I was growing up, I was taught that there's no way, no right way to do a wrong thing. In my opinion, this is the wrong thing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Gloria Ramirez.
Good morning. Well, I say ditto-ditto to everything that has been said before me.
Excuse me, ma'am. We need to have name and address, too.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Gloria Ramirez, three-five-nine East Delano Avenue, Prescott.
Thank you.
And like I said, ditto-ditto to everything of those who spoke before me, so I won't repeat it. One thing I was thinking about, one of the speakers mentioned green standard regarding how they build and how it was going to be better. Well, the easy way, or the easy fix, is don't build. The other thing that was mentioned was moderate income. They want low rental fees or low, if people wanted to move here. I'll tell you, the people that moved here in this neighborhood could afford it. It's not that we want a facility where people that can afford it with a lower income to come in because we ourselves took the time to save and to count the cost in order to move in this neighborhood. And people are anxious to move in the neighborhood where we live. Houses go up for sale, and they're sold either that day or the next day. So that's not a problem. If people want something, they're going to put forth the effort and the money to buy the property. And so we're happy in this neighborhood the way it is. And as other people said, we don't want change, so we oppose it too. My husband and I, and all these people that are here, and the signatures on the petition, please consider what we are saying. And I would like to pose a question to you. How do you come to your conclusion in forming your opinion whether or not you're going to vote in favor of the people or of the builder or who else is involved in this? Thank you.
Mr. Ramirez, I have a question for you. Trying to jog my memory, didn't you come before us before?
Yes, I did.
You did on the, George, what, that Three House?
Yes.
What was the name of that?
Oh, right, it's-
Further west on Rossar.
A quarter mile, maybe a little less than a quarter mile to the west of this location.
I'm going to mention something. When I came that day and I spoke to one of the council members, and unfortunately, I was the only person here to speak that opposed it. But he told me, we're not going to refuse permits because we don't want a lawsuit. And so I said, so what's the purpose of me coming? Oh, no, we want to hear from the public. Well, to me, he sounded like a typical politician. Anyway, he's no longer here, and I'm glad to see that. So as I asked, please consider what we're saying. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Rich Tutten.
Kaylee, could you repeat that name again?
Rich Tutten. And please correct me if I'm wrong.
Hi. My name is Richard Tutten. I live at four-nine-five Bloomingdale Drive, which is right around the corner from this proposed project. I'm not going to reiterate everything you said. The main points are, this is totally out of character with our neighborhood. It would be a bite on the neighborhood. Everything else around there are single-family homes. You know, we're not opposed to having affordable housing in Prescott. This is not the area for it. We had an election and voted for a new mayor and a new city council on the basis that we wanted to control or restrict growth, and this is an example of something that is just not right for the area. So I'm going to make it short and sweet. Some things are just wrong. This is one of them.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Chesley Bell, or Bell or Ball.
Kaylee, once again, the name?
Chesley Ball?
Chesley.
Bell, pardon me.
Good morning. My name is Chesley Bell. I live at three-sixty-five Zachary Drive. That's lot number ninety-five on the site plan. I'm going to give you a little background, if I may. My wife and I, Beverly, moved here in 2018 after living in Southern California for her entire life. I spent forty-five years working in the Navy and the Department of Defense. When we retired, and we wanted to leave Southern California because of the rampant growth, I lived in an area that started out about the size of Prescott. And we left, it was over a hundred and twenty thousand people. You know, traffic was horrible, water was terrible. You know, the developers left, you know, with their, you know, parks and their whatever. But the quality of life really went down, you know, for the people. So now, may move forward. We looked at Prescott. We looked at this particular lot. We liked a lot of what we saw about Prescott. When we, you know, looked at this particular lot, you know, we checked the zoning. We knew that potentially there might be five houses on the other side. That's not an issue with us. We had houses up behind us, you know, in Camarillo where we were at. So saying that, I'm not going to try to recapture all the things that the other people said. I'm going to focus on the site plan. I am a rocket scientist. That was my trade in the Department of Defense. You don't need to be a rocket scientist to look at this proposed site plan. Right now on, and to understand the impact. Right now on Zachary, there are about eight or nine people living in those one, two, three, four houses. The guy on the end can't sell his property because of the street noise. So now, the applicant kind of minimized traffic. So you're going from maybe ten, twelve people in five houses on this proposed development to thirty-six homes, and I've heard seventy-two to a hundred people. You don't have to be a rocket scientist to understand there is going to be an impact to water, traffic, fire response, police response.
Thirty seconds.
Where are the kids going to play? You know, you really don't need to be a rocket scientist to take a look at this and figure out there is going to be an impact. I strongly urge the commission to deny this request, and thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Gregory Lee.
Mr. Chair, after this speaker, could we take a quick break?
Hi, my name is Gregory Lee, and I live at three-sixty-one Zachary. That's the lot ninety-four, directly behind units ten, eleven, and twelve on the map. I had a long statement, but I really would like to ask questions. Can I ask questions, or is that, is this only comments?
Usually, it's only comments because we're trying to get information in. If there is a very specific question you have, staff may be able to answer it for you.
Okay, I have a couple. The owner of the property is listed as Mary J. Swing. Is that correct?
That's what's shown on the county records. We believe it is a family trust. I believe Mary Swing has passed away.
Okay. So there's no one here actually representing the owner, or?
No one representing the owner that I know of. We have the applicant for the rezoning.
Okay, so is the applicant got some kind of a, you know, notarized power of attorney from the estate that they're- That they're acting on the applicant's behalf? I mean, they're acting on the property owner's behalf or?
We do have a signature from someone on the application authorizing them to apply.
Okay, great. So I have a long statement. There's no way I'm going to fit it in 30 minutes unless I talk like an auctioneer. So I'm going to go ahead and just give you the highlights. It's nothing that you haven't heard before from probably every other homeowner that's come up here when there's a rezoning, uh, question. Uh, first, I want to thank the Planning and Zoning Commission for all the work they do. Uh, whether you decide to, you know, approve this rezoning or decline, uh, you know, you're going to make somebody unhappy. And chances are you're going to make a lot of people unhappy if you, uh, propose or approve the proposal. So it's kind of a thankless job, so thanks for that. Uh, I don't know if it's possible just to have the balance of my comments right into the minutes for the day or something like that rather than me up here babbling or?
If you, if you turn the written statement into Kaylee, they've become part of the record of the meeting. They'll reflect in the minutes and be attached to the information that gets forwarded on to the city council.
Okay, so I'll do that. Most of the comments that I have here are, have already been stated by everybody else. Uh, the main point that I wanted to hit basically is that, you know, people on this street behind, uh, the proposed development all made the biggest financial investment of their lives here. We all looked at the zoning map to see what was going to happen behind us. And we made a, a commitment to Prescott based on that assumption. I know the zoning map isn't written in stone, but I hope it's at least written in permanent marker, something like that. So I think the, uh, whenever rezoning issues come up, it should be kind of the last resort rather than the first thing that we jump to, uh, because it affects a lot of other homeowners. So, you know, the, the homeowners directly, uh, abutting this project are immediately going to lose a lot of value in their, their properties. Uh, if you back up to a single-family 35 zoned, uh, house, it's probably bigger than ours, nicer than ours. Our property values go up.
Time is up.
Then they're going to go down, so.
That's it.
Thank you, sir. Um, Kaylee, how many more people do we have?
Mr. Chairman, while she's counting, because I've watched her count before, this will take a while. Just a reminder.
That just means there's a lot to count. Don't read anything into that.
Um, well, just a reminder, your actions are a recommendation to the city council. All of the record that's created by this meeting and any information submitted to you as part of this meeting will get forwarded to the city council for a final determination. That action happens whether you recommend in favor or opposed to the proposed rezoning. The ultimate decision is at the city council.
Five.
Why don't we?
And sorry, Kaylee.
We also have people, a lot of people on Zoom, just the chairman. And, um, so if anyone on Zoom wants to speak, please make sure to raise your hand at your bottom of your screen and we'll get to you after they finish in the room.
We're going to take a break now. We've been going over an hour and a half. So why don't we take, what do we need? About 10 minutes? A 10-minute break and we'll start again, I believe, let's see, is that a quarter till? Uh, before we start again with, uh, your comments to the commission, and we do appreciate your comments, I would like to ask if the thoughts you want to present have already been presented. It would help to bring new things to us, not repeat what has already been presented to us. Our memory is fairly good on what's been said, so, okay? Kaylee.
Okay, so I had a request that I announce the second speaker, um, so that folks may get up and get queued in the aisle. So we have James Burke and then the speaker after is Jean Nelson.
Hello, uh, my name is James Burke. I live at 1931 Megan Way. Moved to Prescott in 2005. Uh, based on all of the wonderful things I'd heard about Prescott before moving here, I'd never heard of Prescott. I was looking for a place to retire from California and I never heard of it. Someone, someone said, how about Prescott? And I said, what's that? Um, that's, so I, we came and visited, had got very much impressed by the, by the people. The, uh, the city, uh, found the Carrington Homes up there in, um, Blooming Hills and decided to go with that, bought a property, uh, moved to Prescott while our house was being built and been there ever since and loving it. Now I'm 80, almost 81 years old. I'll be that shortly, in three weeks I'll be 81. Um, I, I'm looking forward, at some point I'll have to use the equity in my house to be, uh, probably get me into assisted living. So my equity is pretty important to me. Couple of things about, about this I'd like to point out. Um, one is they mentioned the land coverage up there as being 20%. I think if you look at this thing, you'll, you'll, you'll be seeing that it's a whole bunch of that is taken up by those big driveways. So this is not equivalent in any way to the land coverage of the houses in Blooming Hills or any of the other estates around there. So saying that is kind of deceptive. Those driveways take up a whole lot of that space. I ran into this, uh, similar situation in Cupertino, California many years ago. Lived in a neighborhood of all single-family houses, uh, very ni- nice little development in Silicon Valley. And somebody came along, there was a, a school property across the street from us that had been vacant for a while. And someone came along with a, an idea of putting in a whole bunch of lower cost housing, closer together, smaller lots and so forth. Similar situation. The entire neighborhood got together, got all our petitions together, went down and talked to them. The developer, at seeing what the planning commission was looking like at the time, decided maybe that wasn't such a good idea. So what they did was they went away and came back with a new plan that said, take the same property and rezone it for maybe houses, single-family houses, but not nearly as many. The result was that that got built and the whole neighborhood was happy. It, 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 it added to our property value and it didn't, uh, it didn't give any problems anywhere. I'm looking at this and seeing, well, that was zoned for five houses. Why couldn't it be zoned for 10 houses?
30 seconds.
If it could be zoned for 10 houses and make it a reasonable deal for the developer, that seems like a better way to go than saying, well, no, let's go right from five to 36 of totally unlike houses. Um, and additionally, there will be more traffic because the church we built and there'll be big traffic jams on the days when the church is there as well. So that's more traffic for Roser on certain days of the week. So there you go, my time is up. Thank you.
Did good.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Jean Nelson, and then after we have Frank Seuss.
My name is Jean Nelson. I'm at 355 Bloomingdale Drive in the Carrington tract, probably about, um, 200 feet from this, um, proposal. Uh, everything, I'm impressed with the, um, presentations that all of our neighbors have made. I'm always impressed with the, uh, quality of life we have in that neighborhood. And I boil it down to probably two things, and one of them is the one that's the biggest one here today. We've already seen in Prescott Lakes with the rezoning over at Prescott, uh, at Petrogoff Point that, um, the property values will go down. And when you're talking about 10% of million-dollar houses, it's a huge hit. And at the same time, I can't see where the property value of this, uh, project is going to go up. I think it's going to go down to the point where ultimately somebody finally decides it was a bad idea and it gets replaced by something that should have been there in the first place. The other thing, I'm looking at this piece of paper, which is not impressive to me at all, but in reality, the presentation that's been put on by these developers is asking you to approve pretty much of a pick and a poke. We don't know what this stuff looks like. We don't know what the siding is going to be. We don't know what the elevations are going to be. We don't know if it's anything compatible to the existing architecture that's in our neighborhood. Third thing about that is I don't see any, um, place within that subdivision to have any kind of a playground area for children. We know there's going to be children there. There's no dog park there, so all of these people be out on the street walking their dog. And, uh, uh, we're talking about bicycles in this subdivision. If those bicycles stray onto Roser Street, now we got a major problem. So I think that's about, boils down to the stuff that, uh, I wanted to say, which out, without duplicating anything too much of, uh, what's already been said. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
We do appreciate that, sir.
Okay, so that brings us to Joseph Scaronjello, and I apologize again. And Sandy Jackson will follow.
How you guys doing? Joseph Scaronjello, 1910 Riley Lane. Um, I represent the Tamarack area, which no one's even mentioned on this. Uh, it's a 12-unit, uh, complex on the left side of this area. I don't know if you can bring that up. What, what really concerns us is there's also land. You can see that, that flag shape behind, right? Uh, that hasn't been re, or has the same zone right now. But if you guys approve this, what's to stop that from being changed? And then all the other pieces of land around it, uh, having the same issues? If you approve this? And also I, where do these people park if they have visitors? Cause I don't see any, they, they said it's basically a driveway. So I, I mean, I'm kind of confused on where they would go. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, and I also, before I do leave, I do encourage every one of you to go up in there and take a look at the land up there and see what, if this would actually work for us. It, it would just, I think it'd be a good idea for y'all to take a look.
Sir, to address that, I think it's very common for every commission member to look at properties before we.
I appreciate that.
So.
Thank you.
I think I could speak for everybody has been up there and looked at it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, the last speaker card we have for in-person, Sandy Jackson.
My name is Sandy Jackson and I live at 1266 Pebble Springs, and that's in Prescott Lakes. And what isn't shown on this map is, would be at the top of the map, up Blooming Hills Drive, are the condos, um, condos or townhouses, I don't know which they're referred to, which is the village at Prescott Lakes. Um, and then there's the roundabout that is also Blooming Hills. It makes a little right turn there. And that goes into Prescott Lakes. So there is quite a volume of traffic that comes from Prescott Lakes already onto Roser. And I'm one of those people that makes that round trip at least once a day, sometimes up to four times a day. And I know when I walked my neighborhood to get signatures for the petition, I did not have one person opposed to signing for me. They were all opposed to the development. Um, because we all already have the issue of coming out of our development, going down towards Roser because that is Arthur affair, which I apologize to everyone that lives on Roser because I feel so bad for you. We, it's a 25 mile an hour area there, so we're all kind of creeping along. I feel like I should be reading a book as opposed to driving or something. But, um, there's so much traffic already. I don't know how they get out of their driveways and the people on Roser down by 89, it's ridiculous. I mean, they can't get out of their driveways. They have to be able to turn out and, and drive out directly. So I, I just wanted to make that known that Prescott Lakes uses this route a lot. Those of us that live on that end of Prescott Lakes particularly. And the other thing is, I, looking at this development, don't see much green space either. And that's been brought up by other people, but that really needs to be acknowledged. You have a lot of cement there or pavement or whatever. So that's all I have to say and I total agree with, with everybody here, so thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, I believe there are some commenters via Zoom.
Okay.
And Tammy will be, um, handling that.
Yes, we have two so far that have their hands raised. Pete Lang, you can speak. You unmute yourself.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Pete Lang. I live at 121 Rotunda Way. I'm on the HOA board for Estancia de Prescott. And I would like to just give a couple of comments that I don't think repeat what was said. Roser was, uh, repaid a couple of years ago by the city. There's a traffic calming section near Eagle View. And that has been the site of several, uh, police officers having to be stationed there for traffic control, handing out violations because that speed limit is 25 miles an hour. So anything further, and I, the other issue is on the top of that, um, hill, there's also been another, uh, set of police officers. So you're kind of within a quarter mile either way of the entrance of the proposed rezoning site. The other point I would make is the proposed entrance to that site on Roser is right on a hillside, uh, at the top of the elevation would be difficult for, for drivers that are going either eastbound or westbound to really see drivers coming in and out of that section. The last point I would make is as a volunteer chair on our HOA, um, architectural committee, if a builder had proposed a project to us without an elevation or rendering, we wouldn't even consider it. So that's really all I have and I thank the, uh, the committee.
Thank you, sir.
Tammy.
Um, next we have Rich Zablocki. You can unmute yourself.
Thank you. Uh, the name is Rich Zablocki. I'm at, uh, 1954 Ventnor Circle in the Cliff Rose section. And, uh, just a quick comment, we have over 400 homes in the Cliff Rose section which surrounds this area. And, and an unusual, um, issue for us is that we have close to 15% of those homes as rentals. Many of the homes are three and four-bedroom homes. What we've found is that with, uh, an unfortunate number of these rentals, there are, there's an inordinate number of adults, uh, frequently students that are, that are renting these facilities, these homes. Uh, car, parking all over the streets, if you go down Boardwalk, for instance, uh, parking is, is, uh, is, is a, a problem throughout that street. Parties are a problem. And when, when I look at this, if it's a two-bedroom home and, and if it's rented indiscriminately, we could end up again with homes where there are multiple adults, multiple cars. The, uh, the experience that we have in, in our community is that, uh, for instance, just this past weekend, a very large party took place with, with, uh, an awful lot of underage drinking and, um, and parking all over the streets. So, so I don't think there's any way to control that when it comes to rentals. And my big problem is rentals in themselves when it comes to this kind of a situation. Uh, thank you very much. That's all I had.
Thank you, sir.
Pete Lang, did you have something else to add?
No, I've already made my statement. Thank you.
You're welcome. And does anyone else want to? Hey, we have no one else with their hand raised on Zoom.
Okay, I think that concludes our public commentary.
Okay, uh, before we proceed, I want to speak for, hope of speaking for the commission. We appreciate you taking time to come down and express your thoughts to us. We need to have input like this so we can have all the facts before we make a recommendation on that. So I want to thank you for taking the time and effort. I know you probably had other things you wanted to do besides come down to the city hall here, but we appreciate it there. As the commission members feel they need further information.
Mr. Chairman, I had during the break, uh, the applicant ask if they could speak one more time?
Sure.
Again, thank you. Let my, let me start by appreciate, you know, expressing my appreciation for the passion and the engagement that everyone's had so far. Appreciate we have some very different views, uh, but that doesn't minimize my appreciation for the engagement. I think it's healthy and, and, uh, and I do appreciate it. I'm going to go back and touch on some points that were made, just with people. I'm going to go back and touch on some points that were made, just with people's comments, again, for the sake of clarity. Appreciating that this is my lens that I'm sharing, and I don't necessarily accept it to all be adopted, but where I don't believe that I probably can convince you otherwise, what I am asking everyone is maybe to view this through a little wider lens. Because I think what's critically important is a pretty narrow lens being cast on this. And it's adjacent homeowners and adjacent homeowners talking about their property values. And if you let me finish these comments and maybe reflect on it a little bit, I think that what you'll see is that a wider lens is probably healthier, or at least a fair view of the world. I'm going to start in reverse order a little bit, just maybe for the sake of a little bit of levity. And I'm speaking as a homeowner. We certainly can't control underage drinking. We don't condone underage drinking either. But I will tell you, as a proud father of four, it's not limited to rentals. We've had these same issues and concerns in our past. I'm happy to say all my kids are through that and have grown to an older age, but that underage drinking isn't an issue for, limited to rental properties, I think most of the homeowners in this room have said. The, was asked earlier, our rental profile, I said, I apologize, but I didn't know that question, or the answer to that question offhand. The profile from an income for these units is programmed from us for a range of $43,000 to $51,000 a year. That's the income that's programmed for in that. I think it's important to, and I think that was the perfect question, thank you for asking, because I think what everyone's maybe not focusing on, and I'm asking them to for at least a little bit, but there's other people that have also worked hard. Not just the people that are wealthy and have been successful, there's other people that have worked hard and have made commitments and make significant commitments to our community. And maybe they simply weren't as fortunate or as blessed to land in a high-paying profession. Maybe they made a greater good choice, an altruistic choice, maybe they decided to be a first responder, maybe they decided to be a teacher. And they still need a place to live. And I don't think it's healthy for our city, or for our economy, or for, from a greater good, if we cast a little broader net, for overall property values. For property values to truly appreciate, we need a healthy economy, we need a robust economy. We know right now that every school is fighting for teachers, every business is fighting for workers. It's not reasonable for us to displace people of a lower income to go live in Dewey, to go live in Prescott Valley, to go live in Paulden, as has been represented here today. It's, what's healthy is an inclusionary view of this world. And to bring these people in, to make them feel valued, to make them part of our community. As respects traffic, it's important to note that one of the best ways that you minimize traffic is minimizing windshield time, reduce the windshield time. So it's not healthy for our traffic conditions to keep continuing to push people of a lower pay scale or low ability farther and farther out, because it's more windshield time, it's actually a bigger impact on our roads, not a smaller impact on our roads. And it's critical, especially with Rosser being a thoroughfare, where people coming in from Chino, coming in from Prescott Valley, coming in from Paulden, are actually utilizing it to go through. It doesn't make any sense to push them farther out and to increase the windshield time for the drivers who still have to work in this community. The, from a water standpoint, it got raised again, and I just, I want to be really clear that our residents have a much smaller impact. It's a tiny fraction of the impact of all of our adjacent neighbors because of the way that we're able to plan these, because of the technology that we put into these. So water's critical, it's important, it's important to me as a resident. But I also appreciate and want everyone to understand and reflect on, it actually has a smaller impact. And pushing them farther out doesn't change the impact. We have to address it, and we have to address it smart, and that's what we think we've done here. From a car standpoint, it's maybe a little too far into the weeds, but typically the calculation that's used is one and a half cars, not two, so it gets to 54, not 72. It's also helpful to note that if we're able to develop and focus, and this is broader, again, than this development, to focus on some infill, that again minimizes traffic, gives people ability to utilize different modalities of transportation, i.e. a bicycle. If this same tenant has to live, or same individual has to leave in Paulden, they're not going to ride their bike to the high school to work. If they're able to live here, they likely will, especially at this time of the year when it's so beautiful and lovely in Prescott. So it is nice to focus on and think about that how actually infill minimizes traffic and minimizes windshield time, and does open up the view for some of different modalities. The position was taken, sometimes it was this directly, is they can't afford this. And the reality is, right now, we have all, our seniors, our first responders, our teachers, our caregivers, that can't afford Prescott at all right now. So separate from this project, they can't afford Prescott at all right now. And what we're doing is trying to take a significant step towards creating some of that affordability for those people that we need in our community. That's what makes our community healthy. And having a healthy community for property values, it's a more macro view of the world. But we, for property values to be sustainable and continue over a longer term to grow, we can't continue to have a loss of jobs, we can't have our businesses suffering without being able to hire. We have to be able to address what's a very limited, or a very strong limitation on labor and the labor constraints that are out there. One of the ways that we address that for our businesses and for our community is affordable housing. It's very circular, it's not a chicken and the egg, it's a very real component that we have to address. If we want our economy healthy, want our business to be healthy, we have to be able to address housing. And that's what we're doing here. And by doing that, it's actually good for property values, not bad for property values. It was interesting to me that it was brought up about everybody's hometown. And everybody, inherent in that to me is that's, let's make it a little more inclusive. It's not just the wealthy. I happen to be pretty fortunate, I happen to be blessed. I am able to afford one of those homes. But I also appreciate that the people that work for me need to have a place to live, and shouldn't have to go live and, or commute 45 minutes to work because we've priced them out of the market. So it is everybody's hometown, and I'm going to just push that right back. Appreciate that being raised, because it needs to be, and we need to address it for everyone, not just those of us who are really fortunate. Stakeholders, it's broader, that stakeholders in the city are broader than the wealthy adjacent neighbors that could have a, was literally brought up, a 2,800 to 4,000 square foot house with the value of $900,000 to $1 million. The stakeholders in this community, it's broader than those people. Appreciate they're our neighbors, appreciate they don't necessarily enjoy this, but we have a responsibility to take a little broader lens and to address housing for other people besides the ones that can afford a million dollar house. It was brought up numerous times on the amenities and design. Maybe Mr. Rulie would be the right one to speak to this, but my understanding of the process, and my understanding is pretty deep on this, it's not proper to raise it at this time, that's not what we're doing. We're supposed to submit a plat. We're certainly not, you know, hiding or delaying providing the amenities, providing the design work, it's just not how the process works, to my understanding, and again, my understanding is pretty deep. I wasn't asked to bring any of those things in, if that was part of the request list, it certainly would have been provided. I didn't provide it this time, and I've stood exactly here before, and I've never provided it, never been asked to. So I just want to make sure that it's addressed for the benefit of the group that maybe has been fortunate enough not to have to sit in a bunch of these meetings, that they'd understand and appreciate that's just not the process. It was raised about parking. I think what's really, again, asking for that broader lens, but one of the things that I like about this community, different than other rental communities and different than multifamily, is the parking here, there's a full-size two-car garage, enclosed garage with a full-size driveway. So this allows per resident four parking spots, or per unit, four parking spots. Very similar to the adjacent homes. Some of those have three-car garages, but nevertheless, it's got, it's got more than adequate parking and more than any multifamily product that I'm aware of. And that's by design, not by, you know, normally the parking is done by schedule and what's mandated. Here it's done because we think that's what's proper. Green space, I'm not sure what the lens is that it was viewed upon about, you know, not seeing it, but our green space meets or exceeds anything that we're required to do and any of the known adjacent developments. So we have very significant, and it's part of the reason that we utilize this type of a submittal, because it allows us to have very significant green space, very significant open space, that we can also control and maintain, and inherent in that, restrict the water usage. That same exact thing doesn't happen on the adjacent homes, and you can go see some of the most beautiful, pristine landscaped yards in Prescott, Arizona. But it's certainly not green, it's certainly not controlling water usage. Also, it couldn't be controlled unless a design like we have here, where it allows us to control and monitor the green space, and to do that smart, and do that with the technology we talked about earlier. On the leases, our leases, any individual has to be able to independently qualify to live there. So we certainly don't foreclose students from being able to live there. I don't know that you could do that, seems, but what we do is a student couldn't actually have their parent co-sign for the lease. So the person that's actually living there actually has to be the one that qualifies for the lease, not someone living there with a parent that's been more successful or had more time in their career that lives in a different state qualifying for the lease. And that is the way that we control or mitigate having, you know, that student population or that concern, or the concern for multiple individuals in it. What we don't do, because it's individual, we don't allow, you know, stack up eight people to get eight incomes to go qualify for the house. Anyone would like to qualify for the house, they have to qualify for it independently, and we don't go use a co-signer. And what that gets us is a higher caliber of tenant that's longer term with less turnover. And lost, you know, and also appreciatively, much better collections. So it's not being altruistic, we do that, we do it because it's good for us, but it does mitigate, or dramatically mitigate the concerns that were raised. That's all I have. I think everything else I touched on previously, and I don't want to be repetitive, but those were some new points that were brought up just during that that I wanted to touch on. I'm asking the plan zoning, obviously, to approve this. I think it's good for the community, I think it's something that we need. I think that, appreciate that you heard from a lot of people that were very passionate today and very engaged. I think what you didn't hear from is all the people that need a place to be able to afford to live in this town, and are owed that, and I think we have some obligation here to provide that to them.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Before you go, let me, any other questions for the applicant from commission members? Okay. Thank you. Come on up, sir.
Do the guests or audience get a chance to comment on that?
We can make that happen.
Is that possible now?
Yes.
Okay, I'll just make a few brief comments.
Can you state your name again, please?
I'm sorry. Ken Fiddick, 114 East Soaring Avenue. Is that good? Thank you. Just a few comments, not all the points that the gentleman just raised. 36 units, I would think would use more water than five homes. That's, now maybe people have five homes, use a lot more water than people who are living in a smaller home, but 36 properties are going to use more water than five. Okay? To address that question about water usage. As far as the wider lens, I don't know where this gentleman lives, if he lives in Prescott. Does he have a community like this next door to his home? And if so, I'd like him to share what that information. Going back to my earlier comment today, if this is such a wonderful project, there must be another area in Prescott that's properly zoned already for this project. If this is for the greater good, and we need low-income housing, then put this project in a area that's already zoned for that kind of a project. I think that's enough, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead, sir, but I would like to limit on rebuttal here, okay? Keep it short.
Chesley Bell, 365 Zachary Drive. Excuse me. The gentleman would have us play on sympathies for the low-income people that can't afford Prescott. I would suggest that, you know, by following a city plan, a plan that involves bringing in areas and building low-income properties makes sense for the city and for the people, the low-income people, but not sticking this monstrosity in the middle of a residential area. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Chairman, this is Tammy.
We have another one?
Yeah, we have some, a few people on Zoom that would like to speak.
Okay.
Karen Bonnaker, you can unmute yourself.
Yes, this is Dave in Karen Bonnaker, 1925 Megan Way. I think the gentleman, he speaks well, but I think he's misleading the commission by quite a bit. When he talks about affordable housing, he mentioned rental approximately $1,700 a month. I don't think he's done his proper homework on rental costs in the area at this time. He's probably looking at $2,000 a month, and that goes well above his $50,000 calculation. And that's what we have based on his rental. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Could that last speaker please spell their last name? I didn't catch it.
It's Bonnaker, B-O-N-A-K-E-R-B-S, and boy.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have, it says John. You can unmute yourself.
Our name is John Parrott. I'm at 1729 State Street in Cliff Rose. I'd like to point out a couple of things. In Cliff Rose, we just voted to limit the number of rentals in our neighborhood. Part of the reason for that vote was to, because the rentals in our neighborhood are the houses that have the most cars visibly parked in the garage, in the driveway, and on the street. It isn't 1.5 cars in any of the homes I see in my, in my block, just by observation. I'd also like to say, we all know that the build-for-rent trend is a massive trend in this country right now. It is, it's a trend, it's because people can't afford to buy homes in this country, and the build-for-rent, please, please don't be misled into thinking that Mr. Johnson's, this is Mr. Johnson's humanitarian movement for the good of the community. This is a profit-making move by Mr. Johnson. This is purely and simply about making a profit. And there is a question of trust here. The area is zoned the way it is, and we all bought into this neighborhood based on that trust in the city government and its ability to act with integrity.
30 seconds.
There are times when you need to change zoning, but this is an abdication of that trust if it goes forward. I just want you to keep that in mind, because we do vote, and we just did vote to change things here. So that's what I have to say.
Thank you, sir. We have more, Tammy?
We have, we have no others.
Okay. Commission members, is there additional information you would like to receive from either staff or applicant or anything? Does anybody want to make a comment before we move on to a motion?
I would like to make a comment.
Ted.
If my accounting is correct, we've heard from 22 people, 18 here in the room and four over Zoom. I want you all to know, plus those who didn't comment but are here in the room, this is a very difficult process for us, because we're at the nexus of the old phrase, the last person in the Prescott closed the door, and the needs for employment. Now, at break time, I mentioned to Chelsea that he's not the only rocket scientist in the room today. Most of us who've had the opportunity for long productive careers have moved here from somewhere else and enjoy Prescott. But we also need teachers and firemen and police people. So it's a delicate balance that we're facing here. It's not as simple as, well, the house values are going down, so you can't do it. Because we have to appeal to the entire population of Prescott. Now, on the subject of house values, I recently sold my house in Illinois and lost a cool one-quarter of a million dollars. So I have some empathy for the concern that you might lose house values. I would hope that you extend every commissioner, regardless of the way he votes today, on... understanding that we're trying to make this delicate balance. We're operating in the nexus of those two things. When it comes time for a motion, I'd like to go first, if I may.
That'd be fine. Anybody else want to make a comment?
Just a brief one, Mr. Chair. From my understanding of planning and zoning, and as a particular member of that, of this commission, I'm not necessarily concerned about how he's going to collect rent or what the plants look like outside. My function here today is, do I determine to change the zoning from what it is to another zoning? And that's the ultimate question that I'm, I have to deal with.
Thank you. Any else, anybody else like to stand?
Yes. I, you know, when I first looked at this and I started doing my homework and I thought back to when, I mean, East Rossar didn't even exist. I mean, it stopped right at the, just off of Campbell. And this was all vacant land. And we watched Cliff Rose pop up. We've watched all these different developments pop up. And it was, it was developed for single-family units. And, and as I've come back here, I've noticed how the residents along this stretch, along East Rossar, you know, the homes are well-kept. They're, the people take pride in their homes. Yeah, there is a traffic issue through there because it is a thoroughfare from one point of the town to the other, and it can bypass downtown. I understand that. When I, when all these people came into their homes and when it was zoned a specific way, the term bait and switch came to mind. And I think you're, you've, you're, you have residents here that did their homework, that looked at these different, this zone. And I, and I feel it'd be irresponsible for us to change a zone that was in the books for over thirty years to something that doesn't make sense, doesn't make sense to the flow there. It's very open there. And when I did, again, my homework and went through the area, I didn't approach it from Rossar like I normally would. I approached it from Prescott Lakes Parkway. I went through the different streets and the back way from Blooming Hills Drive, those areas. And it is a true sense of a neighborhood. It's people helping out neighbors. There was someone trying to park their RV, and it was three neighbors working together to park the RV. It's an open space. It's a calm area. And I just, I just would hate to detract from that. I know all about affordable housing. I do work with the schools. I know we're trying to get affordable housing for the teachers. But this is not the area where we need the affordable housing.
Anybody else like to make a comment? I appreciate your enthusiasm, but anybody else like to make a comment? Tom?
Sure. What occurs to me is that, is that perhaps the city is remiss in not specifying what we really need and quantifying that. And today, I think the development process is a cost drives price. You rack up all the building materials, you rack up all the labor costs, you add your, your ups in it, and then you define what the price of the house is. And I would suggest that that's backwards. Okay, I think we need to let price drive cost. So I'd be very interested in developers showing up here with a thousand-dollar-a-month proposal. Because that's, that's a twenty-five-dollar-an-hour wage. And that's the people that people want to hire. Those are the people that need a job. Those are the people that do our laundry and our lawns and all other stuff. So.
Okay. All right. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion. There was a lot of input today. I think a lot of that input ought to be processed. There's a, one category of input that result or that reflects the concern for resale value and water. And then there's another that says, well, this is kind of a pick and a poke. We don't know what we're getting. So I would propose that we ask the developer for a site plan and a rendering of what the properties would look like, and we postpone this decision to the next meeting.
Thoughts? It appears that
It wasn't really a motion, I don't think. I think you started out with some thoughts, but if you want to make
A motion that we postpone.
I take it back.
This decision to the next meeting.
We have a motion. Is there a second to the motion?
Keep the public hearing open?
Yes.
So people can come back and hear, and we don't have to repost? Okay.
Is there a second to the motion? If there's no second, then the motion dies. Is there another motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve REZ 21-005.
Do we need to read the whole thing out?
I was waiting to see if you had a second first on it, but we, we as staff have requested that you keep the substantial conformance to the site plan part of that motion, if you have a second.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it with the condition that stipulates that only single-family homes can be built on that property.
Or the site plan submitted?
Is that per, per the site plan?
Per the site plan.
Let me ask you, Mr. Lizelle, is your motion to move to recommend approval of REZ 21-005, rezoning 4.61 acres from SF 35 to MFM, subject to substantial conformance with the site plan?
That is correct.
And is that Mr. Gamboji's understanding of his second?
Yes.
There's a motion on the table.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, Kaylee, would you call the?
Butch Tracy?
No.
Stan Galagoski?
No.
Thomas Hutchison?
Because this doesn't satisfy the need for affordable housing, I find no compelling reason to recommend approval. So no.
Okay. Greg Lizelle?
No.
But it would be, I'm sorry, it may be misunderstood.
Yeah, you didn't have to vote for it.
All right. Ted Gamboji?
No.
Don Michaelman?
No.
So the motion fails 3-3.
Now, do you want them to consider a motion?
Six, no.
So you can, you can make a motion to deny.
We just did.
You made a motion to approve that failed. I don't know if it's cleaner for you to do that or not.
It just wasn't clean for me.
If you leave the motion as it is, the motion will go to the city council along with this recommendation showing that the motion to approve failed, but not showing a an active response. So you're not voting yes, but you're also not voting no.
What if we consider this? We denied
Why doesn't someone, why doesn't someone make a motion to deny?
I'll do that.
Thank you.
And that's the second point, right?
Second motion.
Yeah.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion. I'd move to recommend denial of REZ 21-005, rezoning from 4.51 acres from, oh, 6.1, from SF 35 to MFM.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion seconded. Just to make sure everybody understands this, we are moving to deny this request. Okay? Please call and roll.
Butch Tracy?
Yes, I would agree to deny.
Greg Lizelle?
My apologies for my prior error, yes to deny.
Stan Galagoski?
Yes.
Thomas Hutchison?
Approved denial.
Ted Gamboji?
As I understand Robert's rules, we can do it either way. There's times before and the commission that I've brought motions to end the conversation and get a vote. So when Greg Lizelle did what he did and I seconded it, that was the intent, was to bring it to closure.
Yes, I understand.
For this proposal, I I vote to deny it.
Don Michaelman?
I vote to deny, and I hope we're clear to the council of what the consensus of the commission is.
Motion to deny passes 6-0.
Now you all are free to go home. But we get to stay. We have another item on the agenda, which is the update of the area plans for focus on Granite Creek area plan from Leslie Dornfield with Planet Communities.
Tammy, can you go ahead and promote Leslie?
Let them clear out first, yeah.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you.
If everybody can clear the room, who is not, doesn't want to continue listening to the commission, we do have another item on our agenda we need to address. Again, thank you for coming.
George?
Okay. Why don't we go ahead with the, with Leslie's presentation?
Hi, Leslie.
Hi, can you also add Rick Merritt, Kurt Nagel and Dean Chambers in as panelists?
Dean Chambers?
Rick Merritt?
Uh huh, okay.
And Kurt Nagel.
Can we turn up the volume some more?
And
We're just adding a couple more presenters. So it's, it's a Zoom thing. Give us just a moment.
And then my other question to you is, do you want me to put the slideshow on my screen? Because I can't see your screen from mine.
You can share, ask to share your screen.
Okay. Hold on, let me get it up. Hold on.
And who else did I have to bring in?
Kurt Nagel?
I don't see him.
He should be getting on any minute, so let's get him on. Give him a second. Let's see, slideshow from the beginning.
Maybe you need to hit share screen?
Yeah, I'm going to do that in a minute. I was just busy organizing myself here. Screen to share. Hold on a second. You see it now, the right one? Okay. You're not seeing kind of like the, you know what I mean? The one that I'm supposed to see, but you're seeing the full screen one?
Yeah, hold on a second, but they aren't, so let me see something.
So Tammy, I can see Leslie's screen on the small screen here, but not the large screen.
Yeah. I I'm thinking here. Let me, I'll be in in a second.
So Kurt's having trouble signing on. I'm just going to tell him to try again. Oh, he's there, okay. Well, that looks like you got it, yeah?
We're ready to go.
All right. Hi, everyone, and thank you so much for being willing to listen to our progress report on where we are in the Granite Creek and North Area Plans. I know you just had a very robust couple of decisions in front of you. So we'll try to make it short, but it is a fair amount of information. And we really want to make sure that you're up to date on what's going on. And also, we're at, I would say, a fairly critical point in Granite Creek in particular. And we really want to do get your feedback and thoughts on where we are and the direction that we're going, so that we can make sure as we move forward, we're pursuing things that folks are comfortable with. Okay. There we go. So today for, excuse me, for Granite Creek, we're going to just talk a little bit about the project purpose, the work to date, and then share with you some of our concepts for the quarter. I want to emphasize, we'll be sharing some design concepts for you. They're very draft at this point in time. But we're really interested in your thoughts about the massing and the form more than the building skin and the design. We'll be working on that later. And then we'll talk a little bit about next steps. So just to remind everybody, the purpose of this project is really to leverage the very large investment the city is making in Granite Creek to support the revitalization of the built environment around it. So that would be the land uses around Granite Creek, pretty much from Montezuma to McCormick and from the park south to Aubrey. And we'll show you a map of that in a minute. The project does have oversight. We work very closely with staff. Tyler is our project manager. But we also work pretty closely with Brennan and George, and they try to keep us from making too big of an idiot of ourselves. We also have a working group that we work with that are citizens that help us make decisions. They're what I call our first screen. And so they're the ones that really say, hey, you know, it doesn't really feel good to me or doesn't really feel right. So today, we've done quite a bit of work. We did a site walk. Some of you may have been on this. We spent a half a day walking through the downtown with the community and with working group members. Really, pretty much anybody that wanted to participate was welcome. City staff was there as well, and it was really informative. We also had focused discussion groups with civic organizations and businesses, landowners and realtors, planning department and recreation stakeholders and some other technical experts that dealt with floodplain and water. And the reason we call them focused discussion groups is that, one, they are led by an agenda. They're invitation-only, and the feedback we get from those groups is non-attributable. We record it, we put it out to the public, but we don't say who said it or who was in the groups. And that information is all on the website. And the website is prescott-granit creek.com. So if you want to see that report, you're welcome to look at it. We also had an online community meeting back in July where we presented the preliminary concepts for the quarter, and we didn't really get any major concerns. We had about thirty-eight people registered. I think most of them did show up. And then we have had three working group meetings. One of those included the site walk, and they've both been online due to COVID. Today, I'm online just due to timing. We also did an online survey. We had a hundred and thirty-eight respondents. Ten of them worked in or owned businesses in the quarter. And so really what we asked them is, what are the kinds of uses you think would be appropriate in this area? And you can see a lot of it is entertainment. People want to just be able to be exposed to the creek when they walk downtown. They want more views of the creek. They want more signs that point to the creek. And it was really nice to hear that because one of the things that we were most excited about when we went into this project is, you know, by activating this creek and making it a vital part of this quarter, it really makes this downtown unique in Prescott. I really don't know of a riverfront downtown or a creek front downtown that exists in the state. You know, some people might point to the Scottsdale waterfront, but I don't think that's really the same thing. So this is a very unique area. So this is a very unique area and a very unique asset to kind of activate a portion of the downtown. We also did assessments for economics and land use and circulation and mobility. Those assessments are also available online on the website. Again, it's preskett-granit creek dot com, and you can look at those and, you know, see where we're coming from in terms of our understanding of existing conditions in Granite Creek. And then we also did a study of best practices where we looked at five other jurisdictions that had, that were comparable to the downtown Prescott. Most of them were a little larger, frankly, but that had creekside developments or development that really accentuated the creek. And those areas were Waller Creek in Austin, Wausau River in Wausau, Phoenixville River Works, which is in Philippi, Pennsylvania near Philly, Boulder Creek in Richmond, in Richmond, Virginia. And what we really learned from those studies were the key factors of success for a lot of these areas was development and building standards, partnerships for enhancing and energizing public spaces, making sure the city had control of key sites so that they could force development to demonstrate successful best practices and that the idea of this area could be successful. Focus on pedestrian activity zones, really looking at that street level design and activity, amenitizing public spaces, financial incentives, our opportunities are limited in Arizona, and our team member Rick Merritt is on the, on this call, so to speak, on this, at this meeting to talk a little bit about that. Local management boards and associations, and maybe special districts, which, again, Rick will talk a little bit about, but we think these are also opportunities for Prescott and things that should be considered. Just as a quick aside, we also have Dean Chambers, who's leading the mobility section of our project, and Kurt Nagel, who'll be talking about the design components for this plan with us on the, at the meeting as well, and they're members of our team. You'll be hearing from them later. So based on all of this input and information and listening to the community, we really recognized that to put together a revitalization plan for the quarter, we really needed to look at five areas. And the five areas were land use, design, mobility, economics, and wayfinding. And in all of these areas, what we recognized is the Granite Creek Quarter cannot be a repeat of what you have already surrounding the Courthouse Plaza. It needs to next-gen your downtown. We need to begin to prepare your downtown for younger residents, newer residents, and a different kind of tourist as well. And so, you know, one which is more interested in potentially the environment, more connected to it, but also really wants to spend time shopping and drinking and eating. And so you'll see throughout the plan, these are kinds of things that we kept in mind. And so we implemented the plan really through this planning framework. And the planning framework has, I think it's seven areas that we want to focus on. And one of the objectives or the areas is, one, we felt that we really needed to organize the quarter so that land uses and people could understand where to go. So we did organize it into three districts or precincts. The northern one, and they mostly reflect existing land use, is what we're calling the Work Precinct, where there is mostly employment and lodging uses. You've got the Garden, Hilton Gardens Hotel there already. The city will be moving just outside the quarter. Its office is up there. So we really think that we need to begin to focus on, this is more of a work lodging quarter with food and beverage there as well and services and mixed uses. So for example, if there were services on the ground floor, maybe there was lodging or VRBO or office uses on the second floor. The next quarter, which is really framed by Goodwin and Gurley Street, reflects, again, mostly existing uses. We call it the Play Precinct. And there, what we really want to focus on is really emphasizing retail and food and beverage uses, the cultural and historic nature of the downtown and all of those assets and mixed use. And then the third precinct is the Live Precinct, again, that mostly reflects uses around it and somewhat in it. But there's a very large school there, as you know, Mile High Middle School, and a large field that take up probably 70% of the land use in that quarter. But over time, should those land uses change out, we think it's the opportunity there to begin to look at residential uses that will help to next-gen the quarter and also create more of a consistent population to use the services within it. At the ground floor level, we would also look at retail and mixed uses in that area. And so for that, for the three districts, we would accomplish those through all of our five planned areas. And again, we'll be talking about that a little bit further on. And so these are mobility, land use, economics, design, and signing, wayfinding. Another key way that we decided to create a clear identity for the creek and the quarter was really cemented to Granite Creek. And so what we did is we recommend taking the Whiskey Row Alley and extending it to create this loop, a Granite Creek Loop, so that people would know about Granite Creek when they're in the Granite Creek Quarter. And when they're walking the Granite Creek Trail, they would know about the retail uses and other things that exist outside of that pathway in that quarter. And so you'll see how we talked about this loop in signing and in wayfinding, and frankly, we really want to emphasize it more. We don't think we've done it enough. But some other things that we've also done is to emphasize this quarter is providing mid-block access and windows to it. That sort of responds to the community saying we want to see more of Granite Creek. So our idea is to encourage the use of alleyways and pass-throughs and maybe little open spaces where people can walk down the street, look and say, oh, wow, that's kind of cool. What's that over there? Maybe walk over to Granite Creek. Also provide opportunities to physically and visually interact with it. So that would be through a trail, maybe, certainly on the east side, that's outside of the creek but next to it, but also the development of uses and activities in the backyards of a lot of the development along Montezuma Street and in places, Granite Street, that ignore the creek. And we feel there's a lot of parking lots along the creek. We really need to relook at those and take advantage of those opportunities to turn them into development that provides an opportunity to interact with the creek. Encouraging public and private investment to attract people into the quarter, and we want that investment to be in the alleys. We think that's a differentiating component, and we talk a little bit about that in land use and economics. And again, encouraging land uses that support the focus of each precinct. We talk a little bit about that in the land use area and in the economics areas. And then encouraging development and design on vacant sites that really activate the area. And you'll hear Kurt talk a little bit about the topics that we look at in the design guidelines to maybe influence the kind of development that we want to see in that area. So people recognize the quarter as a unique district apart from the Courthouse Square, but also a place they want to go to. So I'm gonna start with the land use strategies, and we're giving you sort of the 50,000-foot view at this point. Probably within the next six weeks, we'll be putting online a draft plan in an interactive format that'll give you more detail to go through, but at this point, we just want to get some, I'd say, broad guidance from you. And I'm gonna go through this again at even a higher level than the slideshow, just because you guys have been through so much already this morning. But you can see that for each precinct, we've recommended primary, secondary land uses and prohibited land uses. And most of this reflects your existing downtown business code. The one thing I want to point out is that we are in all of the districts recommending that there should be no more new single-family in the, in the quarter. We think that the land is too valuable, and we need people and residences in there too much to use land for a low-intensity use, and that would be single-family. We're not recommending eliminating existing single-family uses, but as those uses look to redevelopment and transition, we don't want to see them replaced with single-family. That same, you know, kind of recommendation is in the Play and in the Live Precincts. And again, you can just see how we're emphasizing the land use is appropriate to each district. We've got some recommendations to change the code. We're working through those with George as we speak. But one of the things we do want to do is maybe expand some of the uses that are allowed in the quarter and limit some of the other uses that don't really operate on a, at least a 12-hour basis in the quarter, so we keep that area active. So some of the strategies we're recommending is using easements to create connections. A lot of times, you know, land is privately owned especially that would create these east-west connections to the creek. Property owners could grant easements. There could be benefits from granting those easements. Where we recognize that most of the creek is in the floodplain, and dealing with base floodplain elevations and FEMA guidelines, it's confusing and frankly, it's expensive. Some landowners told us it was pretty prohibitive to do significant redevelopment of existing structures or renovations because of those prohibitions. So our goal is to reduce the cost of redevelopment in the area as much as possible, and we can do that through reducing fees and speeding up the time it takes to get things through the development process. And you guys are pretty good at that already, but we just want to formalize that. We do want increased building heights. We have 80 feet up here, but after some discussion, we're thinking more 60 feet. But again, if we can build more on the parcel, it makes that parcel more valuable. Again, it makes it more economic to build on it. And it also creates a different look for the quarter, one that's a little bit different from the existing historic downtown. And one of the things that we're also suggesting is this area right outside the quarter, the piece that's owned by Prescott College, and also the city's piece and some of these other private pieces. It might be appropriate to think about applying these strategies to those pieces as well so that we really do have a solid block between McCormick Street and the quarter that really looks like a very solid district. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Kurt to talk a little bit about our design guidelines and how we anticipate applying some principles to connect this quarter through the alley. So Kurt, I'm gonna put on my mute and turn it over to you. And you are not unmuted, Kurt.
Okay, now can you hear me?
We're good.
Okay, very good. So as Leslie mentioned, one of the pieces we're putting together is design guidelines that will supplement the overall plan. And those guidelines are basically broken into a portion that deals with what we're calling connections or guidelines that apply throughout the Granite Creek planning area. And then there's, there'll be separate guidelines that apply to each of the precincts. So the guidelines that, that deal with the overall site tend to address more of the public realm, although not exclusively. And they include looking at the creek, activating the creek, so how to create a compelling and active creek-adjacent environment, enriching and integrating the alleyways into the pedestrian network and building design. I know Leslie talked about the importance of that. Introducing paseos to increase pedestrian access, so those are those east-west mid-block crossings that Leslie was referring to. And then we have a few guidelines about floodplain areas because a fair amount of this, the playing area does fall in the floodplain. And there, it's primarily... Along the alleyway, shading, comfort, public art, wayfinding, and outdoor furniture. That we are applied to each of the precincts. They'll be tweaked and differentiated a little bit by precinct. But generally, we talk about efficient site design and making the, sure, the building location reinforces the street and public spaces, creating active franchises and achieving appropriate scale and massing. We talked about creating human-scale design and just generally achieving a high-quality and visually compelling architectural design. Also talk somewhat, some about circulation and parking.
And I'm just gonna jump in here. These are the big topics we're trying to address with building design. If, as you listen to Kurt and you go through it, you think we're missing an area, it'd be great if you could point that out to us. So that's some of the feedback we're hoping to get from you today.
Okay, so similar to that prior slide, you can see across the top are the principles. And then under each of the principles, there's a series of topics that, that will, where guidelines will be presented in more detail. And there'll be some, this is where we'll tend to get more variation between the different precincts to try to differentiate them. But you can see just a range of topics, building placement. We talked about, you mentioned human-scale design, maintaining the street wall, location, design, building entrances, signage, lighting, materials, colors, articulation of the facade, parking location, and the design of onsite open spaces. So, next. So here, what we're showing, what we wanted to present is, we repeat, you can see the principles, but more we wanted to focus on appropriate or recommended building typologies for each of the precincts. And this really builds upon what the land uses that Leslie was describing. So for the Work Precinct, some recommended billing typologies include employment and office, and that could be standalone, smaller office buildings, or it can include multi, larger multi-story offices. Mixed use is appropriate, and that's a common theme throughout this. Live-work is a possibility, and we want to accommodate support services, food and beverages. Hotel and lodging is also appropriate. We know we have the Hilton Garden Inn up there in the Work Precinct already. So a little, little discussion about this. So this is a, part of what we're doing is we've identified three catalytic sites, and we're producing concepts for those sites. One thing I should point out, Leslie already mentioned that these are very much in progress. So both in terms of the, the look of the building and particularly the landscape. So for instance, this, this particular site is, faces the creek, and that's off to the left in this view. And we know this is too manicured, you know, there's, basically, we have to give this more of a naturalistic feel. We want to make it look more environmental-friendly, some porous paving and so forth. And then in terms of the architecture, we know, you know, we'll, we'll start adding some his, I don't know, we, we're trying, we're trying to find a balance between this new gen concept, but also respecting the historic character of the area. So we're gonna play with the materials and maybe a little bit on the, and some on the form on this one as well. But the idea here is this is a live-work concept that sits on underutilized land between, behind a series of older, single-family buildings. And so with the concept, the live-work and tuck-under parking would be occupy the ground floor, and then there would be residential above. So not unlike a townhome project, except we're accommodating a workspace on the ground floor for this particular...
And one of the things I just want to point out about these site studies and why they're important is what they prove is that for example, the pedestrian area could, could occur within that development. This isn't sort of a fantasy. And when we get to the ground, someone says, well, there is no room to create this pedestrian paseo adjacent to the creek. In fact, there is. And so that's one of the tremendous opportunities that we think exists, as well as the paseo and the alleys.
Yeah, and building on that, there will be multiple views of each of these sites, including showing a site plan configuration so that there'll be more, more context that goes with this. Again, this is all very much in, in progress. But I, I think, you know, we did want to get some some thoughts on the building typology, understanding that the, the architecture and the landscape still in, in progress. And there, there will be multiple views of this. Okay, next. So the play precinct. So here in terms of building typologies, looking at retail, particularly street-oriented retail, food and beverage. Mixed use again, and in some residential could be appropriate, townhomes, we met, Leslie mentioned discouraging single-family residential. And historic cultural is an appropriate type of, of building type here as well. And then next. So this is a site along the creek, across, underutilized site, across from the, the public parking structure. So this, the idea here is a retail and restaurant type use. And this shows the back, the this, the side behind the street that faces the creek. And again, we understand the landscape. It's too manicured here. We'll, we'll work on that. And I think we're going to look at some at the materials on this particular building to reflect more what is seen in the downtown. So let's go next. And then the live precinct in terms of typologies, recommending multifamily use, including loft style. So this could be three, four-story townhomes, live-work could be appropriate here as well. And then mixed use and incorporating some retail as well could be appropriate here. So that could be ground floor of a mixed-use development or certain amount of standalone could be appropriate as well. Next. And so here's a concept. This is, sits between, this is along Montezuma. And also adjacent, the junior high ball field. And so this is a mixed-use concept, ground floor, retail, residential above. And this is another one, we're going to play some, work some with the materials on this to be more reflective of the, of the, of the existing historic quality of the downtown. But we, we do want, looking at striking a balance between, as Leslie said, kind of new-gening this, maybe a little more contemporary design, but not ignore the historic qualities and character of the downtown.
Okay, we're going to turn it over to Rick to talk a little bit about our economic strategies. Rick?
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, good. So some of the things we recommend is to take a look at establishing a redevelopment area in the downtown. So you can take advantage of what's known as the government property lease excise tax, is also known as the GIPL. There, Arizona has very few tools to deal with redevelopment and this is probably the main one. It's been used, I believe, about sixty times in the city of Tempe, about thirty times in the city of Phoenix, and a variety of other cities. So and what it is, is when a development is built, the local community takes over ownership of that particular building or property. And instead of paying a property tax then, which you wouldn't have, which you normally would not do with a government property, you pay an excise tax. And the excise tax is less than what a typical property tax would be. To take full advantage of it though, you should establish a redevelopment area within your central business district. And there are definitions and state laws to how that is determined. But what that does is it allows you to take a full advantage of the GIPL and the excise tax is abated for eight years if the property is located within a CBD and the redevelopment area. So it's a really good tool that's been used throughout Arizona and in some of the larger cities. And we, we think it would work really well here to stimulate development. We're suggesting to target the alleys for infrastructure investments that will enhance the retail environment. The alleys are underused today and with some improvement, they could really be nice pedestrian ways of getting around the Granite Creek area. You could also form a Granite Creek Corridor Business Improvement District to help fund any kind of improvements in the area. Business improvement districts are once again used by a lot of cities. They do require the property owners to agree to form the district, but once it's done, you can then assess the properties to make improvements, to add staff, to coordinate events. There's, you could build parking structures with the BID, things of that, that type of improvement that will really help to stimulate development. Next please. So we really think that it's appropriate. And I know you just heard a very controversial residential development in another part of the city. But we believe that if there's any place for new residential development, particularly higher-density residential development, it's in the downtown area. Our demographic analysis of the area found that the typical resident in the downtown is roughly about fifty years of age, which actually is less than the median age for the Prescott as a whole, which stands at about fifty-eight right now according to the census. But more than that, they're, they're single-person households and they're very low income, probably about fifty percent less income than the typical household in Prescott. So we really think it's important to further stimulate the retail area, the restaurant activity is, is to bring new people into the area, younger, a younger population. Newer development, change the demographic or help change the demographic area of the, character of the area. And then help to activate the Granite Creek commercial opportunities. You can do this through a variety of adult development incentives. You can provide flexible development standards, which much of your code already has for the downtown area. You can waive permit fees, expedite development plans, reduce parking requirements, particularly if you had some kind of, of transportation service in the area. You could probably do with less parking. You could waive or reimburse construction sales tax. You could reimburse development impact fees for those developments. Those are just some of the ideas to really try to promote new residential development in the downtown area. You also have an opportunity zone for the downtown area. This is just a map of it and the south end of that map is Gurley Street. So everything north of Gurley is in the opportunity zone. And this can stimulate investment for residential and commercial uses. I know your economic development people have the brochure in the opportunity zones. And this is where it could really be put into active placement. Next please. So we, once again, encourage high-density residential development on vacant or underutilized parcels on the Granite Creek. And also to continue to promote development of hotels and hospitality venues in the downtown. That'll expand overnight visitation. And you can use the GIPL as an opportunity zone designation in this area. The new hotel obviously is a great asset for the Granite Creek area with the connection to the Sam Hill Warehouse. And that's the type of thing you really want to promote more of. And once again, these incentive, development incentives can really assist with that. That's in the mine.
Thanks, Rick.
Yep.
So now I'm going to turn it over to Dean to go through the mobility areas. There's quite a bit. And so I know Dean's going to give us just sort of a high-level brief through. Again, I would highly encourage you to check the website or we can come back when it's not as late to do a more detailed discussion. Go ahead, Dean.
All right. So I'll, I'll start off with alleys and that's already been introduced in the land use. And the value of connecting the, and extending the Whiskey Row Alley, north and south, and creating a loop in the district. And I want to point out that crossings, the mid-block crossings at the alleys, we would recommend pedestrian-controlled crossings at those locate, pedestrian signal-controlled crossings at those locations for safety. Next. The pedestrian network really is, again, supportive of the land use and the activities that are, are being promoted. And the finer grain, those shorter walking distances, so you're not walking a long block, but getting in and following these paseos, those green lines into the creek and the alleyways, and also along the creek near those mid-block paseos, promoting crossing bridges where the yellow dots are. Next. Bicycles. The district is predominantly twenty-five miles an hour or less speed limit with on-street parking and where that occurs, we recommend a shared street with share-o-type markings, shared markings for bicyclists in those areas. And then where there is not on-street parking, such as north Montezuma, utilizing bike lanes in those areas. And then of course, having bike parking throughout near businesses. Next. Public transportation, there's currently not public transportation in the downtown area, but when it does come, we, we recommend combining those stops with micro-mobility and passenger loading zones. So passenger rideshare is Uber and Lyft. And that is definitely a movement of use that's occurring. And especially with these types of uses in these types of areas. People are wanting to not drive to park and, and walk. They're preferring to ride near their location and ride back home, especially after they may have had a drink. So that's a real key in the future as it moves forward in the district. Motor vehicles, again, we, we touched on the twenty-five mile an hour speed limit and even considering the philosophy of twenty is plenty. But within the district, having those, those lower speed limits and right-sizing the streets, especially a street like Goodwin or Willis that narrower lanes to balance out the, the, the space for pedestrians and motor vehicles going through. Making it more destination-type traffic. The other couple of things I want to point out are the turning movement from, on, from Willis up at McCormick, we're recommending a mini roundabout to promote that complete street, that slower zone. And getting crossings, pedestrian crossings such as at Granite Street. It's very difficult to cross north-south, across Willis and Granite Street. And then pedestrian crossings, as I said, at the alleyways, but also in the creek corridor on the cross streets. And last, I wanted to point out, setting up progression with traffic signals, starting all the way down at Aubrey, adding a signal at Aubrey and Montezuma to, to, you know, control the speed and movement through the district, but keep it moving. Next. I think I already touched on that. And then parking in the district, I did want to point out, we, we have a couple of things. One is the on-street parking and in that, that crosshatch and the ladder symbol here, we're saying, let's capture as much on-street parking wherever we can. So adding, especially like at Willis, Goodwin, north Granite, some over on McCormick. And then south of Carlton, down to Aubrey, setting that segment of, of the roadway up as more of the downtown area and putting on-street parking there. And then overall in the district, especially the north end, we're seeing a need for probably a future parking structure up near Montezuma, Willis area. Especially with all of those commercial uses, but down in the, the south area where there's housing or throughout the area, residential would have its own supportive onsite parking, you know, built into those structures.
So I just wanted to, and then we'll just stop and get comments before we talk a little bit about the north area. But I wanted to let you know where we are in the process. You can see this arrow here. We're actually at putting together the draft plan and you can kind of see a rough framework of the strategies that we're going to be fleshing out and pursuing. Our design concept, again, that will be much more fleshing out and pursuing. And that'll get put together in a draft plan over the next six to weeks or so. And hopefully by December, we'll have a final draft available for your review and we'll be back with that for review and comment. And we'll also be presenting that to the council for review and comment. And then probably in early January, moving that plan forward for action. So with that, that concludes our presentation for that presentation. And we're happy to answer any questions that we can. And we'd love to hear your comments.
This is Ted Gamboge. Can you hear me?
Little bit, yeah.
I used to live in a little town called Grand Ledge, Michigan, which was a suburb of Lansing, Michigan. And through Lansing, Michigan, and through Grand Ledge ran the Grand River. And the city of Lansing did something similar to this. That was a river. This is a creek. And if this was a fifty thousand-foot view of your presentation, I felt like we're looking through the Hubble telescope to see it. Could you give us some idea of what this costs and how would it be funded?
Sure. You know, I think it'd be funded both through public investment and private development. So as for example, development develops along the creek, they would likely create those frontages and their portions of the paseo. Unless the city wanted to get out in front or do a demonstration project along a block. The same for the alleys. But as the city, we're hoping that through signing, maybe through identification of areas where the city can take advantage of existing development, we can begin to promote those concepts. So this isn't a concept that would happen overnight. It's something that would happen probably bit by bit. And as projects one by one begin to prove the concept, more development would occur to support that. And then there would be more money, obviously being generated by the district to help the city continue to invest in it. So it's not like it's a, a package where we just say this whole thing will cost the city XYZ dollars. It's, it's definitely through partnerships, there are grants available. You know, should some of the property owners decide to form a business improvement district, what's nice about that district is that it's the property owners that decide what they want to tax themselves for and how they want to spend their money. So let's say they got together and decided they wanted to focus on a corner or an area or create a paseo for a demonstration project. They could do that as well.
Yeah, this is Stan Galagaski. I have a couple of questions. One is, well, we cut out in here right around the portion that you were talking about, the paving. And I just wanted to know what, along the Granite Creek Corridor, what is the paving method? Is it pavers? Asphalt? Is it going to be decomposed granite still? What are we looking at there? Is it pavers, asphalt? Is it gonna be decomposed granite still? What are we looking at there?
Are you talking about the actual quarter along the creek or the?
Yeah, absolutely. Like the walking path or the riding path?
That path is not part of this plan. So anything in the creek is outside of the plan.
Okay.
So I would hesitate to answer for that.
No, I hear you. Okay, then disregard my questions altogether, because I thought it was part of it, too. Thank you.
Okay.
Leslie, this is Don Michaelman. I want to thank you for taking, and your team, for taking time to present this to it. We look forward for more information down the road on that.
Okay, thank you. So I'm gonna just impose on you a little bit more. Hold on one second. And get the north area plan up. Sorry about this. Thought I had it, but it's not up. Give me one second. Come on, little guy. Oh, here it is. Okay. Okay, hold on. Slideshow, beginning, and then share. You guys see that?
Yes.
All right. That was a lot smoother than the last one. One of the other projects we're working on, or the other project that we're working on with the city, is the Prescott North Plan. And this plan has been more or less put on hold through January, but we thought it would be a good idea to share with you the work that we've done so far. So we'll just kind of go through an overview of what we've done. There is a citizens committee that is guiding this project. It consists of a lot of the landowners, agencies that are involved in the area, city staff, sorry, and representatives at the airport. Here's our kind of project scope and what we're doing for community engagement. And we're really right about here at step three, and that's what we'll bring you through. But we've had our project kickoff, which was also a site tour. We've done our economic studies and infrastructure assessment. And we've looked at a bunch of airports for best practices. In January, we'll start working on some land use options and refine them to create a draft plan. The project has a webpage. It's prescott-north.com. You can look on that webpage for any of this information that I'll be reviewing with you today. And we've had one community meeting so far and a community survey. And we've also had, I believe, four steering committee meetings. As we develop the plan, we'll go to the airport commission. We'll be back here to present the draft to you and also to the council, and then back again to present our final document. So what we'd hope to do today is just go through the area assessments with you. And the reason we think this is important is particularly with regards to economics. This area is an important component of Prescott. It's an important component of the city's future. And so Rick's done some work that talks about where Prescott is economically and where it can go in the future. Dean's looked at some transportation issues and some of the planning that's been done in that area. We know congestion's an important concern as this area moves towards the future. And I'll share a little bit about just what's up there in terms of land use and what's entitled. So, Rick, I'm gonna let you start with the economic analysis, and I'll put myself on mute.
Okay. So we took a look at a variety of different forecasts for Prescott, Prescott Valley. And the one that probably makes the most sense from what we can see is the central Yavapai planning, municipal planning organization, and SIMPO. And it shows that over time, of course, Prescott Valley is going to grow a little bit faster than you are, but still, there's pretty good growth over the next 25 years or so to about 64,000 people. I hope, hopefully, you can see some of these charts, and maybe a little hard to see on the video screens. In terms of employment forecast, Prescott Valley is expected to continue to grow pretty rapidly. Your forecast is going to grow rather slowly. Looks like only about 1,300 or 1,500 jobs, new jobs, over the next 25 years. We think this really understates Prescott's ability to capture employment. And we'll have some slides to show you why that's the case. But these are the best forecasts we can find at the current time. We do think that Prescott will continue to capture the high-wage jobs, the high-tech jobs, manufacturing jobs that you have in the past, and that Prescott Valley's employment will more or less be the service and retail-type jobs, a little bit lower-paying jobs. But if you look at where you stand today, you're about 18% of the county population, but you have 40% of all the county employment today. And we don't see any reason why that can't continue into the future, I suppose. We look at jobs-to-population ratio. Prescott, you can see, is way above the jobs-to-population ratio for any, for the county in Prescott Valley. And even in Arizona, it's about .4 on the whole, and you're at .6. So once again, you're capturing a lot of employment in the past. There's no reason why it wouldn't continue into the future, and you'd be the center of economic activity in the Yavapai County area. We looked at retail and restaurant taxable sales. You're way above everybody else, once again, about two and a half times or so the county average. So once again, you're capturing a lot of retail and restaurant sales across the valley and the county. And if you look at the percentage of retail and restaurant sales as a percentage of the county, you're about 52% of all retail sales in the county are captured here in Prescott. About a quarter of the restaurant sales. So once again, just pointing to how strong an economy you have here and what you can expect to continue in the future. You have to be very aggressive to do that, because Prescott Valley is going to be growing as well. Real quickly, we looked at the unemployment rate. You can see in 2020 how you bounced up there like everybody else, came down in January 2021, but still below the unemployment rate for the state of Arizona in most cases. And then we just looked at through 2020 and into 2021 on a monthly basis where you stood. A lot of ups and downs, but basically, you're doing much better than the state in a lot of these instances. Location quotient. Location quotient is actually a very simple estimate of where your strengths are in your economy. And it just compares a percentage of employment in each of these industry categories to the same percentage that the state of Arizona has. So if you have a location quotient of 1, that means that you have exactly the same percentage of people in your economy in that industry as the state does. So when you're above that, it's a 1, it shows your strengths. So consumer goods manufacturing, you're up close with a location quotient of 3. That's driven by Sturm Ruder for the most part. You can see healthcare. You have a lot of healthcare opportunities here. Government's pretty strong, telecommunications, media, retail, once again. Obviously, you have a lot of retail sales here and a lot of retail employment. It's above average. Education, you've got great education assets here with colleges and the university. So a lot of, lot of good strengths here and no reason why you can't continue to focus on those particular areas. Next, please. Largest employers. I don't think there's anything really unexpected here. The hospital association's the largest, Sturm Ruder, Embry-Riddle. And there's a big difference between your employment and the employment found in Prescott Valley, which is really more oriented towards retail and those types of things. And then the percentage of county employment by cluster. High-tech manufacturing and development is not a very big business and a big industry in Yavapai County. What there is, you have about almost 2/3 of all that employment. Once again, consumer goods manufacturing, you have 58% of all that, all the county employment in that category. And you can keep going down the line. You just, once again, are a very significant employment center for the county. We would hope that you would continue to have that. The airport is a tremendous asset. If you look around in other cities, how airports have impacted growth. You have Scottsdale, you can look at Mesa, the new Mesa, excuse me, the Gateway area. You look out in Goodyear, Phoenix Goodyear Airport, and these are tremendous assets that will continue to provide for employment growth in your community. And we just wanted to set the stage for potentially what could happen around the airport in the north Prescott area. I think that's, I still have a couple more here. Commuting. These are just illustrations of commuting into and out of Prescott. On the top right, you can see that 17,000 people commute into Prescott each day to work, 8,800 leave, and about 6,800 live and work in Prescott. And then the opposite occurs down in the lower left there for Prescott Valley, where you have 7,000 people commuting into Prescott Valley to work and about 14,000 commuting out. So once again, the commuting patterns are pretty similar that you would expect because of Prescott's employment base. And these are just the numbers that back that up. I think that's about it. So once again, just some background on what the north Prescott area means to the city and what it could hold in the future.
Thanks, Rick. I'm just gonna quickly talk about current plan land use, and then Dean's gonna talk a little bit about circulation. This is the general plan land use in the area. You can see there is residential plan for most of the east part of the planning area. And also, I would call it the south or southwest. And then the northwest portion of the planning area in your general plan is currently designated for agricultural or ranching uses. I might add that, as you well know, you're updating your plan. I think that update is starting now. So hopefully, this plan will be able to provide some input into that update. This shows entitled land in the planning area. And you can see that there's a fair amount. You'll see on all of these diagrams. This is the flight pattern around the airport from ERAU. There is well over, I think they said like 300 flights a day. And then this is what I think is what they call the airport impact zone. So you just wanted, the land uses within these zones are usually fairly important and carefully considered, just because they are in the general impact zone. This is the Deepwell Ranch existing entitlements, and then you have AED, north and south in here as well. And then this shows the amount of state land in the planning area. And it's important to note that state land is patient, but it also can operate to sell land for development independently. And while, once they sell that land, the city has control over the zoning of that land, the city typically works, and most jurisdictions typically work with the state land department in identifying general plan uses as well as, you know, future land uses. And some of these parcels are already in negotiations. I think it's this parcel. I might be wrong. I think this parcel might be in negotiations, and there's some easements on other parcels that the state land has indicated to us has made them more interested in disposing of them sooner than later. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Dean to talk about transportation.
Thank you, Leslie. All right. The two exhibits I'm going to show are based on the SIMPO planning, and this is out through 2045. And this is the region around Prescott with Chino Valley, Prescott Valley, Dewey-Humboldt, Prescott. And it's quite obvious that 89 and 89A are the major transportation corridors in this planning area and will carry a heavy volume of traffic. They already carry a fairly heavy volume, but they will continue to need expansion to carry that. Next. So the SIMPO plan, the priorities are, the highest priorities are in the green, which are on the southern edge of the planning area where most of the population is. Willow Creek Road, getting more capacity there. And then the medium priority is 89 and the intersection of 89 and 89A, adding some capacity there. Although they're called lower priorities, they are on the map as need. They're just farther out on the timeline. And adding capacity to 89A east-west, and then the newer roads, the bypass over east around Glassford Hill, the SunDog Corridor down in the south, the blue one. And then it's called the Q and R, the loop around through this planning area. And that shows the north-south to connect to 89 to relieve pressure off of 89 and that part of the intersection south of the airport. Few other things I'd like to note is the need, and this is in concert with the airport plan, of a loop road around the airport to serve the intensity of development that's there and building in the future. I think that's everything I had, Leslie.
Okay, so now we're just gonna quickly talk about some of the community comments that we've received. As I'd mentioned, we did have these focus groups. They were held pretty much in April, the first and second week of April, and we included folks from land use, transportation, the business environment, and the airport. You can see the different groups that we had representation from. This just summarizes some of the key points that we got from the focus groups. The business focus group really wanted to make sure that the airport was protected. And you'll notice that the major Prescott employers, high-tech in ERAU and Prescott College, sorry, Yavapai Community College, it's those large employers indicated they are very heavily dependent on the airport and industries related to the airport. So for example, one of the things we heard is that they prepare graduates to go into jobs that are airport industry-related. If those industries aren't there, they don't have people interested in their schools. ERAU talked about how not a lot of their, not all of their students ended up becoming pilots, but a lot of them became involved in the aviation industry. So, and those industries became startups in Prescott. So it's really important. One of the things they also talked about was supply chain, just needing some of those larger pieces of that supply chain infrastructure. We know that Amazon opened up a warehouse in Prescott Valley. We think that, for example, FedEx or UPS or some of those larger infrastructure pieces might be appropriate near the airport. And then also commerce services are needed. A lot of businesses said they don't want to have to drive all the way into Prescott to eat lunch. It just takes too much of their time if they're meeting a client or something to that effect. We heard from landowners and developers, they felt that the roadway standard should be more updated. I have to say, that's a little bit of a difference from what we heard from the businesses who said the narrow roadway standards in some areas are an impediment for them to get equipment and goods into their businesses. And a lot of times, the trucks literally can't make it to the business, and they have to send a separate truck from their institution to as far as the truck can go to load their materials onto that other truck and bring them into the business. Deepwell Ranch is owned, and there shouldn't be any changes to it. The land north of Deepwell should be ranchland, and it's preserved that way for the foreseeable future. And current land uses adequately protect the airport. Then when we spoke with planning groups and adjacent jurisdictions, again, they all felt that Prescott, the Prescott- again, they all felt that Prescott, the Prescott Airport is a regional resource and it really needs to be protected. It's a regional employment resource as well. We really need to maybe look at some of these, how these roadway alignments are, are looked at, especially with the growth in Prescott Valley and potential planning for the airport. And Dean talked about some of that. You know, affordability is important for Prescott and to begin to diversify your population and also support a newer and larger employment base. Multi-family housing is probably, and again, I know you just went through this, it's desirable, but it's hard to get. And so that was acknowledgement of that. But we think there may be some opportunities for that around the airport in this area. Open space and trail connections are important and you'll see how important open space is to the community in our survey, which we'll share with you in a moment. And, you know, protecting the upper end of that Granite Creek Wash and trail line, it's longer, it's very important. And then retail development is important. So folks that may live up here, folks that are already moving into Deepwell Ranch, don't have to drive and further congest roadways into Prescott to get the goods and services they need. We did have a special meeting with the airport and the FAA and they indicated some very specific airport related topics. One is they do felt, they do feel that city regulations need to be amended to better protect the airport. In particular, they talked about the cumulative zoning of Prescott. Prescott isn't the only community that has this. But you can, you know, zone for one use and then a whole variety of uses are also allowed within that zone. That in fact is how Deepwell Ranch's PAD works. And there was a lot of discussions about that. There's a real interest in entering long-term use of that airport and the ends of the runways are really important in their high noise areas. And then again, you see this roadways and the airports really need to be designed to serve large trucks and support commercial development. So there's a little bit of a variety in the discussion about how this area, some areas of this area should be developed. We did a community survey from April 13th to April 28th. The survey is actually still open. We're just not getting a lot of responses. But you can see we had one big spike on the 26th and that represented one individual from a particular interest group that alerted his interest group to the survey. But we're glad to get those comments because they are all residents of Prescott. And you can sort of see where those response locations came from. So basically, this was a ranking score of, you know, what was the most important? What was somewhat important and what was not important? And these are percentages. So it wasn't a single choice, but you can see everyone thinks that the impacts of development on the creek are important and traffic was a big issue. Wildlife was a big issue. And then following that, if you kind of look at those three topics and kind of set them aside, not to ignore them, but say, you know, that's one big area, traffic is one, and then open space and wildlife movement is another. The next most important thing was what development looked like and that this needs to be a place for aviation-related industries. Following that was an interest in housing that was affordable for those who work in Prescott and the self-contained community. And then kind of rating up there with the aviation industry interest was high wage jobs. So again, I think that people in Prescott really want the environment protected, but they really want to see high wage employment located around the airport and they want to see the airport protected. When we asked folks how important it was to protect the operations, it got a rating of 4.1, which is out of five, a pretty high rating. And here's where all the people were located that talked about that. Here are the fours and fives rating. So, you know, that's almost 70% of the people said that. And when we asked them about a vision for the north Prescott area, a third of them did say it was a high-tech center that was focused on employment. But a lot of them did say, almost half of them said they don't envision any more employment. So it's sort of interesting just to see again, people feeling of two minds when it comes to thinking about this area. Again, when we asked about the types of jobs people see, again, very aerospace manufacturing related. Those are typically higher wage jobs. And then again, about half the people don't envision more development for this area. They like to just drive through and see nothing. I don't like this. It was a word cloud just kind of put out there, but people were worried about development, wildlife, open spaces. The airport was important. And again, water was an important issue to folks. When we asked in ordering of importance, the things to keep in mind when we did planning, again, it's the impact on open spaces. But then the next two topics are protecting the airport and design and appearance. So it's, it's a really, like I said, people I think are of two minds. We realize the environment and protecting wildlife movement is a priority. I think it's mostly focused along the wash. But then people really want to see that airport protected and they want to see people have an opportunity for high wage employment around it. We also looked at a variety of comparable airports, just to see how they handled land use and development around those airports. And it was a variety of areas. Most of them did have planning and development around it. There were some development restrictions. But a lot of them did have planning around it. And again, we have that study on our website, Prescott-north.com. So that's a quick overview of where we are in the Prescott North area and we'll be happy to answer any questions regarding to this presentation.
Any questions? No, I don't think we have any questions, Leslie. Thank you. We're looking forward to getting more information down the road.
Okay. Well, thank you everyone for your time. I know it was a long day, so thanks for taking that extra time to listen to us. And we really appreciate the opportunity to work with your community.
Okay. You go have fun now.
Thank you, Leslie.